Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, June eighteenth, June sixteenth. I'm trying to get it. Uh, just Wednesday, June sixteenth. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Virginia County Board of Commissioners. Uh, call this meeting in order and our first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some minutes to approve.
Um, May fifth, I have no corrections to that at all. The June fifth is not on the agenda, so we can't approve those. And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Public input. Other comments and discussion. No action may be taken on the matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which actually we take a public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments in the audience? Seeing none on Zoom? Okay. So our next item is number three, and that's with pool and NH insurance acceptance of renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approval of for payment from fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand ninety seven dollars and seventy one cents. Thank you, Mr.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. I'm Alan Culp with Pool Pack. I'm Chief Financial Officer. And beside me is?
I'm Kent Mallory with Bay and Age Insurance, working out of the Winnemoc office.
So we're pleased to be here this morning. Uh, Justin's going to be queuing up a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to present to the board. Um, it talks about an overview of what Pool Pack is all about. Um, on our website at poolpack.com, if you go to the About section, there's a video, a short three and a half minute video that talks about what, uh, what the pool stands for, um, and how it got its start. It's rooted started actually in, uh, Pershing County, uh, Pershing County that their insurance renewal came in over four times normal. Uh, they did not have the financial resources, and it was a hard insurance market in nineteen eighty sevens. So we went ahead and Wayne Carlson got legislation passed um, to create a pool. And from that, the power of the pool has continued to grow. But the one thing that's remained the same as the members are uh, the center of everything we do. If we can just queue up about four or five slides. Um, we have, uh, workers comp. We have property liability insurance. Um, right, there we go. And um, so what I like to do is give an update on the renewal of the, uh, the state of the market. Property right now, property insurance is, uh, what we call a hard market. The last two years have been difficult. Uh, some of the carriers have been reducing capacity and, uh, large, significantly large entities are having problems getting insurance. Uh, we had ten percent increase in property over the last year. This year, the increase is only six point two three percent. They've had catastrophic losses. Um, you know, with the wildland fires, those type of things that have affected the marketplace. The carriers are not getting as much investment income off the investments. So, um, you know, they're making it up and underwriting than what they charge us. Cyber, you know, you can't hardly pick up a newspaper, you know, everything that we've seen about cyber and breaches going on. We've made an investment in cyber over the last several years. We've been doing passive network assessments for our member entities. Um, where we go in and we do a review of the IT departments and find out if there's any vulnerabilities. And if there are, we work with them to make those corrections. We also have a software program that we've rolled out to the members. It's called NO Before. I'll talk about that at a later slide. But it's a way that we can address our cyber issue with the members so that, uh, we don't have cyber events. On the cap, on the casualty marketplace, liability market, what we're seeing is some social inflation, these large, uh, large settlements on cases that we're seeing nationally. And unfortunately, you know, we see it California and it kind of works its way, you know, uh, east. So, uh, that has an impact on um, uh, the cost of, of running the programs. We've had some problems with, um, sexual assault and molestation as well as concussions, uh, traumatic brain injuries. Um, uh, nationwide, that's become a huge issue that have driven costs. On the next slide, Ken's going to go over and talk about the program structure and what type of coverage layers we have. Um, and I'll turn it over to Ken.
Good morning again. Um, as you are aware, the insurance that you have, basically, I say, three large components. Your property coverage, which is basically all the assets of the county, including your buildings, your audible fields, all of your equipment, all of your business personal property, which is comprised of what we're sitting around, your computers, so on and so forth. All of those are part of the package that we do with estimated values. Full pack comes in and does all the appraisals and everything for you. Um, I work pretty much extensively with Lacy when it comes to the purchase and repurchase and getting rid of certain assets that are on there. Um, a lot of that sometimes is auto-related. And we identify and re-identify sometimes when we find something that maybe slipped through the cracks or whatever that's not on there. But the great thing about the whole package, as we say, it's covered. Just let's just get it on there and find it. So, um, Alan and I were talking earlier, it's, it's just I've been seven, eight years almost now. I've learned a lot, and I just marvel at what the pool in the pack offers its members and the way it's, as I was said, woven together. I work a lot in the private industry with what we call commercial packages, and it encompasses a lot of carriers. They don't always interact with each other. Here, when we put together a package, they put together a package. It is a package. And so the broad, vast amount of coverages that are listed, and if you look at your, um, proposal that he had given you, I'm not sure if they're part of your packets and everything. As I said, your property coverage limit, the total amount of limit that you have for all your property coverage is three hundred million dollars as a member. Now, there's a lot obviously that would go in there without getting into everything, because I know you're familiar with it. You could see, you know, accounts receivable, arson award, you have debris removal. You also have included earthquake and flood, which is not common in most insurance aspects. Equipment breaks down, your boilers break down. If it causes you any type of problems there, you have all of those things covered. Um, your monies and securities, even if you are a victim of ordinance of law, the federal government or something came in and issued some type of thing that would enter cause of loss to the county, you have that covered in here. Um, so I said again, then we're covering all of your buildings, all of your equipment and everything. So county does a very, very good job. Uh, all of your departments, especially your, I would probably say your public works, but the sheriff department, so on and so forth. Where they're a little bit more, the risk is involved, the exposure in, in just the mere fact of driving your, your vehicles to and from. So if you have any question on any of the property coverage at this point. The big thing too now that, you know, Alan will touch on more in here is the liability. And we're in a very contentious society these days. And a lot of that, hopefully, at least here with the pool pack, is covered extensively in the coverages. Usually in the private market, we offer like one million dollar per life, per occurrence in your liability, where you get ten million dollars. The difference is nine million. If I had to go out and get you an umbrella for nine million dollars, that in itself would probably run about twenty five, thirty thousand dollars or more in, in the standard. That's just an umbrella that would might cover a certain part of it. If you can get it to go over everything. You have some additional, additional limits of liability that cover everything. If you cause damage to somebody from spraying weeds, emergency response as far as for, uh, recovery for pollution, even have a criminal defense fee and, um, defense for regulatory agency. I've really never worked much with that, so I won't talk like I know what I'm saying on that. The big thing, unfortunately, that's starting to happen around the country is we're seeing the, the suits coming on for sexual discrimination. Uh, all different types of things that are happening. And so the pool recognizes that, and they were very, very expensive to try to get. So we have a two and a half million dollar limit on that. Another thing too that Alan will talk about is the cyber business. Uh, you guys are probably the largest of anybody here in the camp and the whole area that, you know, that needs this. So we always encourage you to take advantage. And, um, I will be sending you an email. Uh, Karen, in case you didn't get it, that the pool is going to be having a webinar coming on in the mid-July. That would be very good for your IT people to, uh, because all it takes is one person to accidentally open up a wrong email, and you can be attacked. And as you're seeing already, uh, the country's experiencing some old dime million dollar losses. So we really need to, everyone needs to be on board on a properly email. Um, so the cyber is becoming more and more important. The coverage is, is grows a little bit here. Another thing we also have is the environmental. Um, and you can see the coverage is A, B, C, and D. So if you, if you look at those, um, you know, you have a higher deductible, but again, the limits that they pay and then the aggregate that you get over the years period are enormous than what you would probably get in the standard market. So, you know, with all of that last year, um, I think this year, considering everything and all that's going on, your increase this year, I hope is well within what you budgeted for. Uh, we have a seven point eight four percent increase, slightly larger than what we had last year. Uh, but you didn't lose anything. In fact, you gained. They've even brought on more additional things. And one of the other benefits, I think, that the county takes advantage of also that Alan will talk to you about, that I'll hand on, is the services that the pool pack gives you. Um, they're vast as far as all the additional training, the classes, the safety training. They work with your fire departments, they work with your police departments, they work with your IT departments, they work with anybody. And, uh, they also have their computer e-learning, which he will go on to tell you. So there's nothing like it. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's for the bang for your buck. It's a wonderful thing. And all Andy, you're, you're art owner, I guess. This is your baby, so to speak. And, uh, this is my sixth year with you all now. I didn't know what darn things other than my mom used to be involved in this. Primarily, she would play piano at the end of the day when you guys got all done with your conferences. That's what my mom did as the city clerk in her daily duties. Um, but it's, it's been an honor to, to represent you and to work with all the top people that the pool has.
Any questions? I, I have a comment. I'm looking at the, the invoice and with the dollar amount on it. And it said that you'd like to pay by a credit card. Uh, I think that's a little over our limit on. I might have to borrow Bryce's credit card.
Well, you know, never leave home without your American Express. Yeah, I think that's a standard, uh, thing that we put on there. Yeah, I'm, it comes, this comes out of Reno. So I, I've seen it before, Larry, but I never put thought to it. Yeah, I don't often deliver invoices at this, this amount.
Yeah.
No, you guys do an awesome job. Really, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, if we can move to the next slide, I want to kind of talk about some of the things that Kent, uh, Tita. You know, one of the things that it, it's owned by the members, member governed. And, uh, this chart up here is the approved budget that the, at the annual meeting in April that everybody voted on. Seventy one percent of the, what you pay supports the loss fund and the insurance costs. And then the next largest expense is member services, that, uh, gold, uh, piece of the wedge of services that are provided. You can see our administrative expenses, you know, around about seven percent, you know, in, in the agent commission and the third party administration. So we, we've tightened our belt in the budgets, just like local governments have. As we move to the next slide, you see the, the different six areas of services that are provided. Human resources, risk management, the e-learning, health and wellness, uh, cybersecurity and law enforcement, school safety. So we jump to the next slide on the HR. You know, you have a business partner that comes out and works with the entity to find out what your needs are. And, uh, they also provide legislative support at the federal and state level. Um, a lot of our training, they ended up doing it in Zoom. It used to be all in person. Now they did. Um, they created Zoom during this past year, and then now we're excited, we're able to get back out and do live trainings with our members. We hold an HR summit. We have an employee assistance program that, uh, that you guys can participate in. We hope you do. Um, we have a e-learning portal that I'll go into in more details. Uh, we completed a jail assessment, an assessment of all the, uh, members jails. Uh, compare that against best practices. And if there's any deficiencies, working with the sheriff and the jail operations folks to, uh, make sure that those items are addressed. We have a national consultant, Jack Ryan's firm, that works on developing model policies for law enforcement, you know, use of force, adequate training, those type of things. Uh, he provides that information. It's, you know, to all our members. Uh, he's also on retainer in case there is a case to do, uh, evaluation and, and work on the litigation side as well. We have a loss control excellence program that your safety committees, uh, in the various departments can work with to get some assistance. We can have guys come out and help and do some training on that. Um, and our loss control excellence program, if you guys complete that, there's a financial, uh, award. We just revamped that program, uh, during COVID. We've made it a little bit more robust, and it's a way to help you identify any areas that might need some slight improvements. Specialty Health has a cardiac wellness program. Uh, we were establishing a working committee that's going to, uh, make that program even better and, uh, more accountable. So we're excited about that. We have risk management, uh, programs, folks, that will are going to come out and work with the member entities now that things are opening back up. As we move to the next slide, you can see on the HR that we send out alerts, we send out, uh, HR briefings, uh, to the members. I'm not going to go through all of these, but we helped during the COVID time, you know, with all the federal legislation and that stuff. You know, we, we assisted the entities, we assisted NACO in providing technical expertise to assist the members as well as the legal cities. On the next slide is a summary of HR services, sample model policies, other services, various training classes that are provided. One of the things that, uh, that we've, uh, started out with and really done a good job is our e-learning program. Yeah, we have this e-learning platform where people can go ahead, uh, through Absorb, sign up for these classes, take classes online. At the end of the class, there's a quiz, a couple of questions, make sure that you retain the information. Um, there's a lot of different course materials and course content. Um, you know, you, and you can develop your own courses. If there's a unique thing that you guys need, um, we can work with our, uh, webmaster, e-learning guy, and he can, uh, get those going. We move forward to a couple of slides to our cybersecurity, uh, NO Before. You know, uh, we work with Justin. Um, Justin's been, uh, working with Tony, Tony Rucci, and, um, you guys are using NO Before. We're really glad about that. Um, you had a passive network assessment done, um, back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, probably time to reassess, to, to get another one done. Um, you know, uh, we're having these quarterly IT meetings, uh, webinars, as Kent talked about. Now, and we encourage all the members to call in on that. And it's a bunch of the IT technical guys. Uh, I listen in just because not that I can understand what they're talking about because they're technically over my head, but I've always wondered what it was like living in foreign country, listening to. Or someone listened to me on my budget presentation, and I understand accounting really well. And then, you know, so if I listen to the IT people, I'm like, wow, okay, those guys are super smart. But we've got to stay vigilant and, um, you know, and the smallest entities, it can happen too, as well as the largest ones. Um, so we're real pleased. We have, in case there is a cyber event, we do have, uh, a cyber virtual risk officer, Tony Rucci available. We have the legal people onboard. Um, we also have where people can do desktop exercises and you can practice as if, you know, and say, hey, if the cyber event happens, you know, go ahead and do we have the backups? Look at the backups, make sure they are from last night that they, you know, and that type of thing. And we encourage people to do that, just like you do, like your Lepsee committee does on other, uh, local emergency management type responses. Um, to the next slide, cyber awareness. Um, we're trying to fight cyber crime one email at a time. We've created twenty micro learning courses. It takes less than two minutes each to go through one of those, and that's that NO Before program. And, and, uh, that's, you know, gets, Justin will be pushing that out. In the next slide, we have our loss control excellence program that looks at the different programs, uh, you know, within your organization, IT, the financial, the employment, HR, transportation, law enforcement, facilities, recreation, the road, streets and bridges, those type of things. And it, what it does, it's a tool to help your folks make sure they're doing the right things. And if they need some assistance, we can provide that technical expertise. And that's the power of the pool is everybody working together. You know, when I was at Churchill County as a finance guy, I was able to help my community. And I served on some local, or some committees throughout the state, but working with pool, we're able to reach out. I'm able to reach out, provide expertise to, to members beyond and help pair the talent. If, you know, I may not know the answer, but we can find the answer. We can find the right person with the right resource. So maybe somebody, you know, an Elko that's willing to come out and help Pershing County type of thing. And, you know, it's members helping members, owners, you know, invested in the program, doing what's best for your community, you know, here in Love Lock. Um, and, uh, that's why I'm excited. I was a member of the Workers Comp Program, packed as chair for many years when I was over at Churchill. And now it's an honor last three years to work for the pool. Really believe in what we do, and we thank you for your membership. And, um, I'm ready for you to ask Kent all those hard questions and the easy ones, uh, I'll handle.
So, I mean, is that number will then our budget?
I don't think I have a question. Yeah. But I don't have any questions. You guys do a great job. And, and when we reach out to you or Marshall or anybody, they come back to us and respond. And that's, that's great. Swimming pool is open again. And, yeah, it's been temporarily patched, and then when it closes for the season, then they'll go in and do what needs to be done. But that was a concern and everybody worked hard on that. So, thank you.
Well, you know, one of the things from a cost mitigation standpoint that you may want to consider, you know, and we could run some analysis, um, this year. If, you know, if it's going to be a financial burden, is your deductible currently is a thousand dollars. If you raise your deductible, that will offset, you know, the, the rate of the increase. But at the same time, when you have a claim, you would pay that higher deductible, whether it's twenty five hundred or five thousand or ten or, you know, whatever level you choose. So if that's something you may want to consider, maybe not this year, but in subsequent years, you know, we're, we're willing to work with, uh, uh, to get those numbers for you and let you see that as a possible budget mitigation measure to keep the cost down.
Okay. Are you ready for that? I am. Um, I'll make a motion that we accept the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance, um, Pool Pack. And for the twenty twenty one, twenty two funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand and ninety seven dollars and seventy one cents.
We have a motion and a second to, to accept the proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
My motion passed.
Thank you so much again, and thank you for, you know, what we don't see over there.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Exciting things are happening in Port Rochester.
Oh, gosh.
I saw that presentation last night.
Yeah.
You're going to get it this, this later.
Yeah, we're very grateful for everything that's happening in the counties.
So number four on the agenda is review all of the agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business. Or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I didn't see anything. So I'll make a motion that there, there's nothing.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Road Department.
Hello.
Hello. How are you guys?
Good. You're in fluorescent, yellow or green or whatever.
So you don't get run over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the usual, we have been busy, uh, finished up Coyote Creek. Uh, took a little detour and fixed a little bit of, but comes to go. It's horrible. Uh, we had some gravel patches we haven't got to in a couple of years. We would fix that on the Lake Grass Valley. Went up there. We're still pre, almost done up there getting ready to make fluoride, and we're working on this valley right now. Got to get it done this week, and then we start spraying mag next week. And then I was able to spray some, a few other things. Doesn't sound much, like much, but.
You've been busy.
Yeah. Well, thank you. It's a lot of hard work. And then with the heat, you guys are staying hydrated. And do you have those things to put around your neck and keep you cool? And, okay.
They're all in a cab pretty much. Jacob's on the road, but he's tough.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Everyone has that.
So we have, uh, permission to re-prioritize ten wheeler funding to buy a, what the truck instead.
Yes, well, the one ton that we use now for patching, which we use a lot, um, you know, we put coal mix in the back and then pass the rope of shells pretty. Pretty, doesn't sound efficient, but it is. Uh, that truck was bought by the landfill actually. Um, it's got over all, just about three hundred thousand miles. It's pretty much done. And so we found a uh a suitable replacement at State Perkstein. And uh, just want to use some of my, the money that that was slated for a ten wheeler or ten wheelers.
Yeah.
Say, um, it's fifteen hundred bucks. There's another wrecked one there with a dump van on it. Sounds like we're gonna get that pretty much free, might be five bucks or something. So that's what I'm asking, just. It wasn't explicitly put in the, in my capital outlet, but I'd true like to replace.
And you still have time to do that in this this year's budget?
Yeah. It's all queued up. You guys give me permission.
And and you worked with Rain, so she's okay with, okay.
I'll make that motion to approve. Reprioratory reprint. Tizing. The one ton pickup. Instead of the ten wheeler.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
I.
I motion. Good job. Landfill and recycling.
Is that, uh, I don't know if you guys heard, but Mitch put it as two weeks notice.
No, I was wondering. I thought maybe it was the new guy.
No.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, wow.
I asked him every day last week if he changed his mind. So.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Leaving.
Leaving the area. Big bummer, uh, big loss for the county. Life goes on.
We're, uh. Yeah.
Not too sure how that's gonna go up there. We definitely gotta get something hired. Steven indicated that he would be probably could be charged that. I don't know if I'm there. There we go, we're working through that. Just a limited that. Hope to take a vacation next week and then I'm gonna get. Get busy on that. We have one application so far, so.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and advertise and hire the vacant landfill operator position.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
I.
Motion back. Get them. Go out, go for it.
And recycling, things are going well. It's covered and. You know, we're still looking for outlets for everything else, but. Joe's keeping up real well. Lowell Henderson is a volunteer and he's in the audience and he helps us out too and so.
Very good.
Yeah, so far, so good.
Right on.
Believe me, I will. You always do a great job. Thank you. Okay.
Billings and grounds. Morning, John.
Morning.
Good morning. He's actually smiling. What's wrong?
Um, since the last meeting, we've, I think we had our park show. Um, went off, uh. Orlando doing well. Everybody liked the, what was going on at the park and they left it in good condition, very minimal damage, essentially. Um, told you, working, Gail and everybody on that. Um, we also planted this last week, the Randy Mancivo Memorial Tree. And the plaque, the dedication will be on the twenty first of next month. Um, while one that need to get the everything underground now before the tree was actually done. Perspire.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everything's, it's planted in the gray area. I think that will repel there. It'll get some good visibility or it gets plenty of water where it's at.
What kind of tree is it?
It's a, like a ash or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of its leaves are dead, but I saw green growth, so I was.
Every plant, like in in the tree or shrubs, they always go into shock, so it's uh, it's nothing I was overly concerned. Um, it all always happens.
It'll come out of it.
It's coming out of it, just fine.
Yeah.
Um, park has been. Um. Okay, a lot of, a lot of trash is being left around. I think we're moving in the right direction. The kids are behaving a little bit better recently. Um, we'll see how that goes. Um, bathrooms have been that kind of a mess. Um. Oh, yeah.
But we've been leaving them all open longer than what we used to.
Yeah, we used to close them down at three thirty. We'd keep them open until between five and seven and nine.
Yeah.
My comes in and closes them. We open up about six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning now. Um, and this is also on the weekends. That we're doing this. So I expected a little bit more use, but I don't expect the abuse that that is going on still.
Yeah.
Are we still having kids on the courthouse steps or has it gotten better?
No, that's.
We need to do some, and I'm not saying you, but something needs to be done about that. We need to shoo them away. They shouldn't be hanging out.
I don't know if signs would even help.
No, no, no signs, people.
We do, as a, as a community. And as employees of the county, we should all have the authority to tell the children to leave it alone, but they look at you and they scoff and they just keep doing it.
We can get some of those motion things from birds where they. Siren or goes off or something.
It'd be going off all the time.
I mean, they act like it's the state park sometimes and they ride their bikes and down the stairs and. I'm more concerned of somebody getting hurt, whether it's somebody using the building or the children themselves.
All I've, I've seen the kids on the sides of the stairs and it's like, what happened to they fall off? It just.
Yeah.
And then what about climbing the building and the and stuff? Are they still doing it?
That's an ongoing thing.
Okay, so have you spoken to the police department?
They're, they're, they're doing what they can. I, I mean, yet I understand as well as they, they expressed me. They're also short staffed. They, if they're out on calls, they can't be here. Um, but again, when, if my guys or anybody else from the public house, they just kind of blow it off. Perfect volunteers. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had some park volunteers and.
Saying it's terrible if you listen like volunteer.
Cause they have nothing. Um, other than that, we've been spraying weeds, working out ball fields, doing stuff at the airport. Trying to keep up on the cemeteries.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard because the weeds are growing like crazy.
Yeah, a drip of water brings in weeds.
Yeah, well, my weeds don't even need water and they grow overnight like this, so um. At the concession stand, we're having some issues there.
There, there have been some issues. Um.
I think there's beer being stored in there or whether it's.
Stored or sold.
Or sold. I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Sold, but they need a liquor license.
And if it's being stored, it shouldn't be stored in there. It should be in a personal cooler.
Correct.
So is the rec, we're gonna do, direct whoever or let people know that are using that facility? That that's not the proper uh way to go?
Yes.
Okay. Because we can't have that.
We had an incident with a leaky pipe this last week as well. Um, then individuals that are responsible for that have managed, they did stop it from leaking. Um, they do need to repair it still though. Uh, there was a leak that went from Friday night until Monday. Uh, morning. Um, it was significantly soft, one of our frost tree fossils that were out there that they had tied into.
Sorry, was it below ground that was leaking or was it above?
It was below. Yeah, um, wherever they connected at.
Yeah.
Something. Somehow something got lost and, um. It wasn't when they did it, it happened shortly after they did it. I looked at the, I went out and looked at video and it's exceptionally dark um out of the ball field most of the time. So when it, when after the sun went down to the following day, I couldn't see a whole lot of anything, so I'm. Going to add a light out there on that light pole that's near that location at the.
Yeah, so you have nightlight.
I'll have a nice big light on there. Think about adding some other security type lighting out in that facility because there are people that do use that. And have been out there at night and I'd like to be able to see what's going on if something does happen to the facility.
The gate's locked, they're just going over.
Well, there's going around it. There's a bandit that walked, he walked right through.
Yeah.
Um, I am concerned that there are several vehicles being pulled into there when they're not supposed to be. They're only, uh, it, no vehicle track, it's really supposed to be under, whether it's, you know, they can come in and drop their stuff off. But then they're supposed to park on the outside. I did notice some of this last week and there was about a half dozen or more vehicles parked all around. The concession stand. I get they don't wanna carry their equipment, but that's part of the rules. Um.
Well, they're able to use the facilities without any deposit or fees or anything. And I know that the community puts in a lot of work and effort to the the ground.
Spend a lot of money.
Yeah, but and they do a lot, but they need to respect.
Well, they're not in.
Well, they're not, are they cleaning the restrooms?
Not that I've noticed.
So.
And that was the understanding that that they empty the garbage and clean the restrooms.
And then I heard that there's things being stored in the concession stand where they have their own area, you know? So there's a number of issues that they need to be make. Just correct, I mean, and if they're not gonna respect the facility, then maybe they shouldn't use it. It's not that hard to empty trash or just to follow a few rules.
Yeah.
It's just that it, and and not that that my department couldn't do it. It's just more stuff that we just.
Well, we have a choice. We could charge a fee and then we could hire someone part time to do what they say they were, will do as a volunteer. And it's, we don't wanna do that, but if they can't manage it on their own. And I'm sure we've got people that do everything exactly right. It's probably just a few individuals or groups, but.
Well, it starts with leadership.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's really kind of what my stated task again.
I do know that the community center is now done.
Yes, as of yesterday, I did forget to mention that. Oh, I'm.
What's done?
The, the electric. And then the washer and dryer, with the exception of the towel just being done today, added right, that's also.
Wow, good.
Done. They'll be working on Emily, I believe, rest of the week. Um, at whatever there's, they're trying to get it, they're trying to finish all those stuff. We ran, we ran everything through the cycle to make sure that things were working. We had a, we used an extension cord to run the washer through the cycle and everything. Pretty nice.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
So we also have a Google to advertise uh or hire or and hire. Uh, buildings and grounds, maintenance worker.
I think it's time that he's been shorthanded and I'll make that motion that we go forward.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Just so you know, that's not the best.
Yes, we know. Yeah. Thank you, Rain. Um, Bryce, we have issues with kids on the courthouse steps and still climbing the buildings and just hanging around. Causing concerns and and safety issues because what if they fall off the steps or fall off the building and? Any suggestions? Other than you and I to walk around and tell them to get out?
Well, um, I don't know how those were reported. However, they're reported. Both through we, through other county employees.
I won't go tell them to move that. What else are you gonna do?
I yelled to them before.
Do they?
I don't, I don't think it's as bad as it was before school got out.
Okay.
I don't think it has one either.
My desk sits right up there and so I see them all day long and I don't think it's as bad.
Do they move when you ask?
Swimming pools open. Yeah, a place to go. Yeah, before it was like, Fridays seem to be the day they roll the steps, but yeah, I don't, I haven't noticed them. Yeah, hopefully we get better.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. I know. Just have to be really forceful when you tell them.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm wrong, I guess.
As far as the liability issues, that's something that we can talk about outside of the public meeting. Ways that uh we could prevent them climbing on the building with the big electricity danger there, but. As far as climbing on steps and things like that and just being in the way, just nicely ask them to. Like something to go do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Persian County Fire and Ambulance. I see Mike here, Ben. Oh, and Jesse. But I don't, I don't see your leader.
Uh, I talked about him yesterday. I asked him to meet here and talk about inspections, but he had something come up and then that whole gesture represent him, so.
You anything to report?
No. Here's Mike. I do.
So Jesse, I have a question.
Yeah.
I have some stuffed animals that are new or practically new. Does the fire department accept them?
We will take them in to kids.
That's what I mean, so. Okay, yeah. I mean, I won't bring anything that's not nice, but. Okay, great.
Are these big, little?
They're kids size. They're not huge, you know, but they're, yeah. They're not tiny, tiny.
Standard size.
Yeah.
Alliance club also does that stuff for Christmas too.
Okay, they won't fit in the stocking though. They're bigger than a stocking. Cause I already donated stocking sized ones for for that.
Go ahead, Mike, what do you got?
Well, I, I hope my pocket doesn't interrupt them with two meetings going on right now, but. Uh, so we, we've been doing all, almost all the county inspections are now complete. We went up to North County last Friday, did uh Emily, uh Mill City. Actually, I went to Winnebago, did inspection for the young lady that's gonna bring the boot truck here tomorrow.
Okay.
What a nice operation she's got.
Good.
Um, yeah, so that'll be good. We do have a couple of issues uh with some inspections that we've done. I spoke to Mr. Ackley about one about a month ago. We gave an extension to one of the facilities. Went yesterday. Still, there's nothing done.
And they haven't done it.
So, I mean, there, there's really no choice because there's some huge safety concerns there.
Turn them in.
Then to, well, you know, Rod has the ability to go in and say, okay, can you fix this?
You shut them down.
Down. We think it'd be better to uh, for this first one to bring Joe in from the state and say, hey, we've got a report, we'll follow. And uh, we did the community center. We have one issue there that we need to address with regards to a fire door that has been taken off. Put back on, but required. It's on the extension side. So we took a fire door off to put a refrigerator in. They didn't put it back on. Oh, and because it's a break room and it isn't required fire door, we need to put that. So I, I'd need to catch up to John with that report.
Yeah, he's.
I tried, there, you're still here. I tried to call you out last meeting. So we're, we're moving forward pretty good. We've done a few from the city. Rodney and I uh met with Mike after we did a couple of them there. And he was on board with it and to just keep him in the loop on some things that uh that we find. So I think we're actually moving forward. Did uh complete the grant for Emily. Um, Larry and I talked about that and I'm not quite sure if Jerry has ordered that yet or not. He is authorized to. The problem I get is whether the Sean or Rod, that's the only communications I get. I'll get communications from emails from.
Yeah, cause he was off rest orders. I have a feeling he did.
Yeah, but I, I'm not that one.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
It's completed.
Anybody on there?
Great.
One, I keep hearing noises.
That's, that's me. I got a second, I mean. I got as cooked down as I can get.
Sean, Sean Burke is on there.
So that's it from inspection side and we're.
So when you um submit the invoice or the invoice is submitted to be paid monthly, you provide a list of inspections that you've done?
Actually, we have it in Firehouse software, so we can print that out.
Yeah.
But what we've done is we actually went and made forms. So like this is the TA truck stop, so we have them made in triplicate, so they get one. I get one to enter in, Rodney gets one down.
No, that's great, but make sure that with your invoice or whatever that Rain has.
Do that piece.
Well, Rodney, okay.
Yeah.
We'll let him know. John, did we take the door off the break room in the extension area? John, Ken, sorry. Did we take the door off the break room in the extension office? Okay. Get it back, get a door on, okay.
It's been off since when?
Just before I got.
Really?
Okay. Well, you had to do the inspection, so I wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, I was told it was taken off to put the refrigerator in the break room and then it conflicts with the operation of the refrigerator.
Oh.
That's not my game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently not, I know.
Anyway, thanks for bringing.
Yeah, we're moving forward. I think the, people have been very, very.
Good.
Receptive to what we've done, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Glad it's working. Took us forever, but glad it's working.
Sean, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so, uh, we, uh, last weekend, we, uh, wrapped up a EMR class. Uh, so Grass Valley has three new emergency medical responders that will be licensed through the state. And Ry Patch, uh, had one student who completed the course, so making some progress there. We also, so I, and I sent, uh, I sent Larry a email on this topic, but our, uh, our brush truck, which I've talked about in the past, is back from the Ford dealership. Uh, they were unable to locate the problem. Uh, basically can't fix it. Um, it's been into the Ford dealership a couple of times. We had a separate mechanic that, that a couple of us, uh, are familiar with in Winnebago, had him look at it as well. Also could not identify the, the problem. So fundamentally, um, when it seems like when it's operating, you know, under high load circumstances, like on a fire line with, you know, high temperatures and, uh, and, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, it just, uh, derates completely and is, uh, almost put us in a bad spot a couple of times. So I am, uh, gonna officially say that that truck is, uh, is a danger and not serviceable as a piece of fire apparatus. So, uh, I guess I'll be working with, uh, Larry to, uh, see what we need to do to get a replacement for that.
Sounds good to me. What's that?
I would say that's it for the fire department. Do you want me to talk about, uh, Lepsi stuff as well?
While you're on there, sure.
Okay, so, uh, obviously the COVID bit has, uh, really dwindled down. Uh, all our, all our current efforts are happening, uh, through Marcia Foreman, their, their, the health nurse's office and Cheryl. Um, they are continuing to do vaccinations, um, but even I think their, their load is starting to, uh, to, to drop down pretty significantly. Uh, on the grant funding side, uh, the CIRC, uh, the State CIRC is meeting today to, uh, to decide on the, uh, the United We Stand Grant, which is the law enforcement focused grant. We have an, an application in for about twenty five thousand dollars. And also for the, uh, operations, planning, the training and equipment, OPTI grant. Uh, that's a hazmat focused grant. And again, we have in about, I believe it's about twenty eight thousand dollars. Uh, request for that and I, um, based on my discussions with the staff there, I don't anticipate any problems with getting those approved. So hopefully we'll, uh, get that report from the state today. So that all appears to be on track. Regarding a couple of the other COVID related grants, um, we're still waiting on, um, the state to give us the fifty thousand dollars that, uh, we had lined up for COVID vaccinations. Um, you know, we've designated what all that money is going to be spent on. And, uh, they're already demanding reports. I have to, I have to call in once a week and let them know what we're doing. Uh, and my report pretty consistently is, uh, we're waiting for you to give us the money. Uh, so we can pay out, you know, there's some salary enhancements for, you know, some of the, you know, the nurses that help us out, some stuff like that. Um, and, uh, the, the health officer. So just waiting on that money, uh, not real clear on when that's gonna be forthcoming. Uh, also, uh, we had the EMPG supplemental grant. If you remember way back when, uh, we got, we were, uh, supposed to get some money to rent the reefer truck and, uh, do some electrical upgrades at the sheriff's office in case we needed a, uh, mass casualty or a mass morgue facility. And that was approved a long time ago, uh, but they have not got around to, uh, actually distributing the money and, um, pretty much can't even contact the folks by email at this point. So, so if anyone happens to be in touch with, you know, the, uh, you know, with the state, uh, or, or with the, uh, you know, with the county groups. Um, you know, maybe a prod on them, cause they, you know, everything has been approved to my knowledge. They're not waiting on anything other than to actually make the distribution of funds. And that's all I have to report for emergency operations.
Thank you. How about, uh, Grass Valley?
Uh, nothing significant to report there. Um, but our next meeting is on the twenty eighth. And, um, other than that, uh, nothing, nothing going on in Grass Valley.
And then twenty eight, you. Okay, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
We have next, we have, uh, safety. You wanna read that?
Um, Cheryl Hawes, um, submitted a written report as her and Marcia are at the prison today doing COVID shots. Her report is, let's see, Health Department. We are finally getting back to some normalcy. Our clinic roster has been full with a few COVID vaccines still being administered, plus our normal scheduling. We have not seen the turnout for the Pfizer offered to the youth twelve and up that we hoped for. We are still offering Moderna, J and J, and Pfizer. Marcia brings the Pfizer vaccine here from Winnebago since the storage is so sensitive. The drive-through flu pod is still on for September thirtieth, twenty twenty one at the community center. Um, the safety department, July first will start mandatory safety courses for all Persian County employees. Each department has a computer that employees can do their courses on. I am working with Pool Pack to coordinate building safety inspections. This is one of their services at no cost to the county. Also, we will, we will be doing fire extinguisher, extinguisher classes. Safety meetings will start up on July the sixth. One representative from each building or office will be required to attend. With regard to the cemetery office, we had a meeting, we meeting Cheryl and I, um, with Bruce Cheney from Spatial Generations. And we are on the final draft of the new cemetery mapping. And once that is done, which we're expecting in the next week or so, we will get the software going. Um, she has not started closing a Blount Mountain Cemetery. She's waiting for signage with hours to, um, put that up. She does have the chains and locks to be used. Cleaning is still coming along. Katie North and Chastity Arnett have had the, um, the youth, uh, work crew, the teens out at Low Mountain. For the past two Fridays, they've been cleaning up the fence lines, doing a great job and the cemeteries are looking good. Weeding is always an issue, but John does everything he can with regard to that and we very much appreciate it. That's it.
Very good. Community Center, approval to offer position of Community Center Coordinator to second applicant. Is that salary or salary or readvertise higher vacant coordinator position?
Has Karen, did you check to see if that person's still available and if they're still interested? No?
I, I would like to see us re, readvertised to, to see what we get out there.
Okay, and I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll make, let's see, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and readvertise, um, the vacant coordinator position for the community center and go through the hiring process and interviewing and all that. And if the other applicant is still interested, they're well there to apply, yeah.
I will second that, but I would like Heidi to be on the interview.
What's that?
I'd like Heidi there also, on the interview, interview committee. For the center director.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Let's see. Lacy, do you have anything to?
So we need. Go ahead and she's got items in.
Yes. So, so we have, uh, approval of course corrections, changes to the tax rule. Pardon me? No, nothing. Approval to advertise higher vacant admin clerk one, two.
This is a replacement.
And that's a replacement.
So I'll make that motion that we go forward with that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, motion passed. Uh, acknowledgement of affidavit of publication of notice of sale and return of sale.
I wanted to just give you a little history on our prepping sales to show you how great it is working with the grass. Um, our last sale, um, the first one of the grass, we got two hundred and thirty one parcels. And we sold a hundred and eighty for one million sixty thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars. Our sale previous to that, we used, um, an auction company and had a light sale. And we had a hundred and eighteen parcels and we sold sixty six for two hundred and eighty six thousand four hundred. So, good for assets, it's ringing in. Considerable amount more.
Yeah.
And selling a lot more parcels, so. They are a great asset.
Yeah, it's. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to acknowledge the affidavit of publication of the notice of sale and return of sale.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? We have a nine thirty for Rochester. You wanna come up and get set up?
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't want them to hide back there. Gotta put them on.
That's right.
Nice to see your faces.
As a reminder, now that you can see my whole face, I'm Elena Ware, the general manager here at Rochester. I will be introducing a couple of new faces as well, both on the screen with some photos for those that aren't here in person, so. I'll get back to you in just minutes since the presentation comes up. Okay, so we're here to give an update. We'll cover three different main areas. I'll talk first and then I'll hand it over to Greg and then Terry will close things off. So as I mentioned, if we flip to the next slide, there's a few new team members as we're continuing to grow and expand and manage the construction project. On the left, you'll see Buck McElroy. Uh, Buck is our new project director. Uh, he's, I think, sixteen days in right now, so he's getting his feet under him very quickly. And, uh, he is staying here in Love Lock whenever he is, uh, onsite, which, uh, for quite some time is gonna be definitely more often than not. And so we're really pleased to have Buck on board, uh, to help with the expansion work that's happening. Uh, we also have Shantae Lassard. Uh, Shantae is somebody that, uh, will be in and around the community more and more because her responsibility is to look after communications, community and government relations. Uh, that was a much needed, uh, position that we've now brought on as a, as a full time and that's intended to continue past the duration of the construction project. So that's a new position there for Shantae. And then we also have over to my left, Brad Gibson, who you can see in the photo as well as in person. And Brad is in charge of H S E C, Health, Safety, Environment and Communities. So recognizing the added support, uh, that's needed for all of those critical areas, we brought Brad on board as well. And, and he's just got a couple of weeks under his belt here as well, so. Excited to have that growing support that we need to make sure we're doing things the right way. Go to the next slide. Uh, specifically on health and safety, I did wanna highlight that even as we are bringing on more contractors for the project and Greg will talk about some of that, um, but somewhere around two hundred additional people already. In addition to our, our already three hundred and twenty five employees at Rochester, we are now over five hundred days working safely without a lost time injury. Uh, that's an important metric for the mining industry and, and we're proud to see that number grow. Oh yes, Shantae can give away it as well. And, and I do have, uh, I'll make sure that I leave cards as well. I got Shantae's card. I'll, I'll mention in the next slide here, I think, or a couple of slides coming up. If we go to the next one. Uh, just a quick continuation on health and safety. We've just heard about, uh, is, is continuing to be something that we need to be mindful of. Uh, so while our overall response plan has worked very well and we didn't have any kind of super spread cases at site, we are still seeing one or two, uh, random cases pop up. We do tracking on that and then we quarantine anybody that was around that individual. And we are continuing with rapid testing being provided by a third party. So we do both random and symptomatic, uh, or exposure random testing. And so we're continuing to see very low numbers onsite and we'll continue to do so. If we do see numbers increase, uh, we're prepared to increase the controls that we have onsite as well. Next slide. Uh, so I won't go through all this. These are slides we've used for internal communications, uh, but something that I think is, uh, really important to help us manage the ongoing operation at the same time that we're doing the expansion as well. So what we've developed is what we call the critical focus teams. And, and so there may be some familiar names, both on this one and the next one, of people that are doing some of this key work. Uh, we've got leads for each of the areas. I'll call out one specifically, the one right there in the middle, MP one thousand with a new crusher. We took out our old MP eight hundred secondary crusher and put in a new MP one thousand. Just by the name alone, it's bigger, from eight hundred to a thousand. Uh, and, and that MP one thousand is the same pressures that we're gonna be installing in the expansion project. So it gives us that opportunity to learn now as we're operating to make sure that we're set up for success. And that critical focus team did that uninstall and reinstall of new in about half of the time that was originally budgeted. And so tremendous effort to, and I'm really proud of the work that they were able to do. And, and then one thing that I think is really important is when we do have people working on extra stuff, but that we recognize those successes. And so we have done some lunches to celebrate, some recognition, some, some hats that people can wear with pride on the MP one thousand swap. Uh, just yesterday, I was at one of the lunches to celebrate the leech pad recovery one, which is also highlighted in green because that one's been successfully completed. Uh, we got to have a meal. We had a full taco bar that BJ provided for us and it was delicious. And so it's nice to have those times. On the next slide, we'll show two in orange that are new critical focus teams. And, and I'll particularly mention the stage six overliner one, the first one there in orange. Uh, that is one that is the first direct interface between Rochester operations and the project. When Greg talks, he'll show some photos of what that overliner is. It's material that's coming from the mine and being used to create the foundation, uh, for our stage six, which is for the DOA eleven expansion. And I think I've got one more slide. Oh, I've got two more. So I'll stop on this one. Uh, this is, uh, an update that we are providing because obviously it's impactful to us and, and there's some aspects of it, uh, that, that were. I guess will be impacted by it is what it, so there's a new tax on gold and silver. Uh, and of course, most people would be aware, uh, the other types of mining are carved out of that. It is only for gold and silver. Uh, this is in addition to the net proceeds tax. Uh, so on that, the net proceeds tax, the allocation remains. So the part that is allocated to the county.
What we're afraid of is what comes next.
Absolutely. Um, and it's directly tied to, these new revenues are directly tied to being funding for education, uh, for the state. Uh, and the state shares of the net proceeds is also going to be allocated to education. Uh, so I will say the new tax is a result of negotiations and compromise among key stakeholders. And I've had included both the industry, Nevada Mining Association and the legislature and governor's office.
I just hope it does go to education.
Yeah, well, that's, you know. Yeah, that's the.
Everything's supposed to go to education and it ends up there.
That's why they keep adding taxes.
Yeah.
And they use that as the excuse.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the, the last slide that I've got to speak to is, uh, it's essentially reiterating our quote unquote that we have at core, uh, which is holding ourselves to a higher standard, but then also making sure that we're communicating, uh, to the commissioners that we have reiterated that with all of our contractors and subcontractors. We recognize that there's a lot of new people coming in. We recognize that there's a lot of new people coming in and sometimes for temporary periods of time. And we have made a point, and will continue to make a point with them, that we also have that same expectation of all contractors and subcontractors. And so I mentioned that I've got cards. I'll put them in my bag, I'll make sure that I leave them for Chantay. So as Chantay is responsible for that community relation side of things, we want to make sure that you all have her direct contact information. If you ever are hearing anything of concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out directly on that. I provided my card last time as well, and I also want to continue to have that open communication there. So that's what I've got, and now I'll hand it over to Greg.
Yeah, so go ahead and go to the slide. So it's good to see you all again. We were regular for a while.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice to have a familiar face, you know, lots of new ones.
No, it's good, it's reflective of, I think, where the mine is, is the future. So I just wanted to give you a few updates on the project, which if you haven't driven up there to Limerick Canyon recently, you know, personally, it's worth the drive to see the progress that's happening. I'll show some photos here in a few minutes, but just to kind of set the tone. So the project is in full swing. We are looking at a, still a wrap-up around the end of next year, so we have the 2020, 2023. Red map, the contractor personnel we have on site, which you can see a lot around town, of course. They'll keep ramping up through the end of this year, we'll peak out at the end of this year. And they are starting, you know, that Love Lock is pretty full. Our people and, you know, some of the other projects in there. We're starting to fan out a little bit, so we have people, so Buck and firmly, they're all coming here every day, right? So definitely Love Lock is full and it will stay that way.
For what?
Yeah. And so that kind of sets the stage of that. Right now, what's going on is, actually, I'll save that for the next couple of slides. So we want to move to the next slide, just regionally or geographically reminds you kind of where we are. And I'll see if this works or not.
It does, but you were way over there.
And I think once it goes on the TV screen, it loses it.
Yeah.
It won't let it on the screen.
It doesn't on the TV, doesn't. Either, okay, sorry.
Just refer to the colors.
So the green on the top is where the construction is happening. Oh, thank you very much. The purple in the middle, that's the active Rochester pit, that's the legacy area that has been operating for a long time. And at the bottom, the multitude of colors there, that's Packard. And we aren't doing anything with Packard, these products or the mining or anything like that right now. And we're focusing on construction and active operation for the next several years. And we'll see how Packard falls. But just to be clear, that's kind of the sequencing of things, so. There, so if we want to move to the next slide. So here's what happened, if you recall, last time we met, about six months ago, we were transitioning then from brass and sagebrush in this Limerick Canyon to clearing all the vegetation off, stockpile the topsoil, getting ready to start the actual construction. So as you can see in the picture, we're well on our way to that. Just to kind of orient yourself and mind, if you, it's right in the center at the top, you can't see it, it's right over the ridge there. Yeah, you need the turnoff on the left. And the entrance to the project is where you see that. I do want to point out that we have a public kiosk at the entrance, there's a pull-out signboard. We'll update that every once in a while, it's basically public information about the project and what we're doing there. That is historical stuff for the canyon area there in Rochester. I did want to, you can see the long straight road there, that's the mine access road or Limerick Canyon road. And I did want to take a moment to, you know, kind of remind everybody that we are busing, we're providing vans for all of our contracted personnel. I heard last night that we're looking at about a month or two to start bus employees as well. Traffic's an issue on the road, as you know, you guys probably hear a lot. And we want to do our part to make sure that the commute for everyone of our employees is the same one, let alone the county traffic that is associated with that. We're going to continue that for the duration of the project. And do want to take the opportunity to ask if you've heard any complaints or issues with traffic, we'd certainly like to hear about that as we can address it. So let's go to the next slide. Same photo, just pointing out some of the things, and you can pretty well see these from the kiosk or some of the lookouts. Public road. So just in the lower center part, that's where I go every day, the admin area, warehouse and security areas. And there's a security gate in place with a building with safety training and whatnot. Warehouse that we're going to use for construction and terminal operations. And you can kind of see the, just some of the pieces of infrastructure. So starting on the lower right, we have the substation, and the energy will be built back here soon, first next year or so. The big area in the middle is the leach pad, I'll show another photo here. That's going to be the long-term leach paths to be fed by the crusher. Crusher's going to, you can kind of see at the top right there, the crusher corridor is being developed right now. So they're bringing the hillside down, they'll create a good platform for crushing equipment. Structure. The last thing to point out is the stage four to six hauler, right in the top center, we're actually hauling material for our leach pad development or leach pad construction called overliner, calling it from the existing operations. It's just a crushing facility over to the leach pad with the mine operations. So we've got traffic control and all that in place, flyers out there for now, so that we don't mix any county and mine traffic. Situation. Just to make sure, hitting my points here. So the several work that they're working will continue through October for the leach pad area, a little bit longer pressure portal. We're starting vertical construction here this summer, so start pouring concrete, put foundations in for a lot of the big crushing equipment. And that's going to continue through the end of the project. Any questions on that? We'll go to the next slide, just real quick, this is a little more updated photo, but you can see the plastic going down and those little white dots on it are just sandbags that we put up there. So if the wind comes up, it does, with plastic, it costs problems for us. And then, and then the kind of lighter color geometric dirt layer on there is what we call overliner. It goes over the leach pad, that creates a nice drainage layer for our solutions. As it gets placed, make sure that that overliner is going to be there for a long time. It's going to be, have to drain freely for a long time, so we take a lot of care to it. And plus, it protects the plastic, and so make sure you don't have it. Terrors or punctures or something, tend up there, because it's pretty hard to get out later. So, so. That's it, that's the end. And then the next slide, we have a 45-second video we took into a drone, go ahead and click for one more time. We take a drone video every two weeks, so at the end we have a nice.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, if you're not there lately, you might not be inclined to now. Visuals there. Yeah, you can see all the activity of the trucks. We sped it up, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a beehive activity. Six cents.
It's a great visual.
Yeah. That's it, so any questions?
Amazing.
It's fun, it's fun.
And you're right, it's time to take a drive.
Yeah.
Well, it's changed a lot from when I worked up there in 1990. Just a few years ago.
And hopefully we'll be there long term.
Oh, we want you to be here forever.
And that's for Terry.
Yeah.
Sure, it could be on the drive. We don't have any more questions, we'll jump into the future of Rochester. So I'm Terry West and I'm the permitting manager. And we're working on the, our next project. So if we go to the next slide, we'll be introducing the Lincoln Hill Exploration Project. So last time, we came and spoke to the commission, we were in the baseline phase of the project. So now we're more into the permitting aspect of it. But just to give you a little background on what Lincoln Hill is, so Cor Rochester purchased a land package from Allo Gold, which is right patch gold, in 2018. And when we purchased the project, there was quite a bit of resource development already. So what we're doing now is pushing forward a little bit more exploration drilling to further identify the resource and make sure that there's actually an economic resource there. So we're working currently what we call a notice level. So we're allowed five acres to do, you know, a few exploration holes. Identifying that we probably need to do more, we have submitted a plan of operations to the BLM to permit additional acres so that we can define even more resources. So we're pretty excited about the resource because, like we know, we have silver there, which we're known for. But we're also seeing higher levels of gold deposits, which is also pretty exciting. So I'm excited about this project. It's located, if you see the green border there, that's called the Plan of Operations Boundary, thank you. And it is just east, or just west, sorry, of POA 11. So if you were to look west of that Plan of Operations Boundary, that's for Rochester, POA 11 Boundary. So right now, we're moving to the west. Limerick Canyon goes through the north part of that Plan of Operations Boundary, as does the Rochester Canyon. A little bit of visual there. So if you go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more of what we're proposing. So a total of 200 acres of surface disturbance. So that should really give us a good five to 10 years to do exploration drilling if we need that. And the surface disturbance is going to be primarily roads, pads, and sumps. Phase one of the project, not a whole lot of surface disturbance, because like I said, there's been previous exploration activity out there. So we're using a lot of the existing roads that we have already. So the white square smack dab in the middle of the Plan of Operations Boundary is what we call the Lincoln Hill Target. That's our number one target that we're doing their exploration drilling as soon as the project is approved. And then just to the west of that, you'll see a few more magenta dots. That's called Gold Ridge, and that's the second target we're going to be looking at. So those are the two main targets, and we're calling that Phase One. In Phase Two, we're going to be potentially going to the south, which takes us to where that Packard Flat area is that we saw, kind of just directly west of that. And that's Weaver Hill and Independence, so that would be Phase Two. In addition to Phase Two, we're proposing 50 acres of additional surface disturbance for resource characterization. So it takes a few years to identify the hydrology and the geochemistry. So we're proposing eight monitoring wells to be drilled and installed to understand the hydrology of the area. Because we do know that water is a critical resource here for Love Lock, and I know Rusty's smiling behind me. So we do identify that, and we want that early data. So we're being selling the monitoring wells and a weather station to identify evaporation and weather there, as well as geotech and the geotech chemistry, which we will understand how we can plan our mine and waste our products. And then the last portion of it, it's doing our due diligence. So as I identified, we have had previous mining out there. But Charlie Mine was a big one, it was Lincoln Hill back in the early 1900s. And there are some soils that have been left behind that we don't know the chemistry of it. So we're proposing to do some analysis on that, on those soils, the quarantilings, to see if there's an opportunity to do some proactive cleaning of past mining activities. So if we go to the next slide. And so last time we spoke, we were in the baseline study mode. So we've progressed quite far in this, so we've completed the baseline, submitted the plan of operations to the BLM. And we've already completed scoping, so the commission, I'm sure, received the scoping letter where the stakeholders are encouraged to participate in the public part of the permitting. Right now, we're taking all of the comments we've received and we're putting that into the environmental assessment. We have a second public portion of the permitting process, it's called a public comment period. And that's what I really wanted to focus our discussion on right now, it's from July 20th to August 20th. It will be published in the paper, we'll continue to do outreach. We were in Unionville Monday, speaking with community members, but just letting everyone know that this is a public process and we encourage the public to get involved. And how we can do that is we're leaving Chantay's cards, get ahold of Chantay, get ahold of me. We're happy to talk about the project, answer any questions. It's a six-month MEEPO process, so it goes by pretty quick, but wanted to make sure that we know that that's a public comment period is coming up. So that's all I have, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. As we mentioned a few times, that we're going to give Chantay, make sure that I follow through on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that wraps up everything we wanted to come up today.
Good job.
Yeah, we're excited about everything that's happening, excited about the new members of the team, complimenting the longstanding members of the team. And yeah, we certainly plan to continue to be here in operation and contribute to the community.
You know, there's a thank you in order for this little building that showed up at our Martin House Museum. And it's all because of Core. It's going to take some work to make it where people can actually get close to it, but it's, thank you.
Well, and also for the lot cleanup downtown, everything that you guys were involved in and your contractors. And I mean, it's just 18 months, and thank you so much. We, there's so much that Core does all the time.
Absolutely, we're happy to, thank you.
And the city has a new sign.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah. Yes, nice meeting you too, welcome.
Good job, thank you. Justin, IT department. I think there's some other people here waiting for you to get up there and talk.
Right, so the in the two weeks since I've talked to you, this whole big package that we have in front of you has been a lot of what I've been working on, other other department work. It's just been our normal, trying trying to get all the projects finished up before the end of this year and our normal day-to-day support. So to to get to the the big things. I I think I think it made you all aware of why you've got the first item. That was that was my fault when I got the three-year pricing from NIS. They they changed the speed they were offering rather than increasing price, which after discussing with price did amount to a EBITDA, which meant that the others couldn't didn't submit, couldn't be compared fairly in a like-to-like manner. So we went back and got like-to-like information from all three when we actually grabbed promised to let one vendor know that we were starting these discussions. So so the the I I presented them to you in the same packet in alphabetical order. So we can, we can talk about we talked about each one again. So the the first one is the AT&amp;T. This this is actually going through Danny Backs and ATP Solutions. So this, this is using new pricing that we get through that relationship. And having discussion, having those those higher-level discussions about about the parameters that we set out before. The it's essentially the same, except that we went from business medium critical level of a service to real-time, because all of these locations will have voice-over IP phones. And that was their strong recommendation, go to that guarantee of latency, minimal latency to support those phone calls. So this, this, this would also be, this could also be expanded out to more facilities. Talking with Mr. Backs, he actually recommends that we we go to place and worry for AT&amp;T. We do an order for for all 10 of our our high priority sites. Rather than just the four sites within Love Lock. So going going to to our core four of us, like New Centers, Road Department, everything, all everything like that, which would obviously be more than what is listed in this proposal. So the the summary page is just is exactly what everyone has been for. They also provide the the they also provided a breakout of their pricing. And what the totals would be 12, 36, and 60 months. It's basically all the 12-month price and just multiply by the monthly pricing. Any questions about the AT&amp;T offer? Okay. Going over to NIS, Jesse's here, if you have any questions. His previous, his previous proposal was 200 by 200. Yeah, the other two vendors didn't have the 200 by 200. They they moved from 100 by 100 to 250 by 250. So I asked them to provide his 250 by 250 price. It's it's otherwise, it's the the same proposal as last time. Do you have any questions about this proposal?
So you've gone through these first, these two, NIS and Sky Fiber. And you can see the dollar amount difference. What else do you see in difference wise?
So the the different, the difference, the the big differences are in the, I think, the method of transport. You know, how how information goes to each location. AT&amp;T is would be using fiber, which is, was, and always will be the goal. A a hardwired connection is always going to be better but it also tends to be the most expensive. Sky Fiber's solution. I think they can, they can, they can speak to it far better than I can. I think provides the the middle of the road. It's 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 wireless to a point. But it kind of, it it's, it's a different technology, it's a kind of a different technology than I think that than NIS uses. So I I I think there's, there's a nice balance between bandwidth and reliability. And then in in NIS has an advantage of being already there in quite a few of our patients. And so so we are, we already have that relationship. And having all their technicians right here in town.
You just have to do some upgrade to get to 250, 250 or something.
Well, that's, that would, that would be part of what he's going to be deploying. He's he's said, so when when we turn it up, it'll, it'll hit us. That's, that's, that's the guarantee that all three goals, all all three providers have me, is that when we when we turn this up to the line, we will this, this is what they're going to give us. So so so, yeah, I've I've talked to, I've talked to Chief Nancy both over at the city, because they they switched to Sky Power, and he has nothing back to say about them. You know, and I've we've, I I think the majority of us have have spoken with Jesse or or had his service on on different sites different sites of business, residential and in business.
So I have a question. So MNIS last time indicated that they would, even though it's for three years, would be okay with us terminating early, like month to month?
So that the new proposal
Okay. And Sky Fiber, would you be comfortable doing the same thing? Or are we locked in for three years? I'm just asking.
It is a three-year contract, but we have a service level agreement. If we fall below that service level agreement, the contract will, others, we don't.
Right, right.
One other thing that we've been with the six other counties that we serve, the world counties in Syracuse. We we have alternate path other than just AT&amp;T. We we always bring in the second carrier, second path. So when, for instance, when the fires in the canyon hit like three years ago, Wenamaka, Badamun, all those places were up and running, yet AT&amp;T internet was down across the state. So that's, that's the goal, what what we always try for whenever we decide with the counties.
So there's redundancy.
Yeah, redundancy.
Um, Jesse, do you have redundancy?
Yeah, so we have a tangent circuit that we have through AT&amp;T, and we pay for a service called a sonic ray. It's more money than I want to admit, but what will happen if one side gets cut, it'll revert back to the other side. And we do not go to the canyon anymore. That like for me, it's not my intended line. It's all my own two. So we have to go across the city
Okay. So is there's redundancy? Okay. Because what we talked about before was fiber was the way to go, and that will be a foundation for the future and for the community. So I don't have a problem with still going forward with AT&amp;T because it's fiber. And however long it takes for them to get it going, whether it's a year, or six months, or two years, or whatever.
In in my conversations with Danny, once we, once we put in order, he was saying it was going to be a matter, a matter of weeks.
Really, really?
They 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 when they go and review their maps based on the on the addresses I provided, they they said that most of our locations are near their fiber. So then it would just be building, it would just be, you know, breaking into that fiber and bringing it over to the facility.
But don't they have to dig up the streets and stuff to move to move fiber from one where they're connecting to us?
I couldn't tell you. If if it's buried, then ask.
Well, yeah, because and I can't imagine that it would just take
But if it's, if it's the stuff that's just hanging off of the poles, then that
Oh, okay. I didn't, I don't know that. I always thought it was underground. I'm sorry. Yeah, me too.
But that's, I guess that would be normal, but it can
That that would, that would be the preference. Because then then you might, you don't have it exposed in a stick. You haven't buried it in the ground, but if that's not cost-effective, then so I I I couldn't, I couldn't tell you their their actual net, what they'd actually
But it would start almost.
It would be in any, any, any of these, any of these very quick, once, once we take it off.
Well, I I still feel that we need to go with AT&amp;T to get the fiber in the community so that we can build from it, and we can use the American Recovery Funds for that. And then it, to me, if if likes for like, NIS's proposal, and then month to month, you know, depending on when we're finally connected with AT&amp;T. That's my thought. So
On our proposal, there's that optional, so over two years, it's only 26,000.
Yeah, ba- basically on the the other change that Sky Fiber made to, who was able to make the proposal is or they made clear to me, is that the the maintenance on the point-to-point sites, we could, we could take that out, then that 249 for for three sites per month is no longer there. So 7.71 is gone. And then if there's, if there's a problem that we need to have them come in, take a look at, it's time materials. Rather than having maintenance.
So for me, because my brain is not operating properly, what is the total? If we went that way, is it the 26, 259?
Right. Yeah, so on on the Sky Fiber, we also broke it out, one with the maintenance is time material, and one with the maintenance.
And so my next question then is, are we locked into three years with you? If AT&amp;T were to get us going in two months, three months, six months, and when they say months, that could be a year, I mean, or weeks, that could be a year or two. Are we locked into this for a three-year contract? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, and that's how it was set up. We were told that you you guys didn't want fiber at all the locations because of the cost. So we ordered fiber all over the state constantly, and whether it be AT&amp;T, CenturyLink. So we tried to make the the proposal in the budget of what you guys were looking to spend. So that's why we didn't even push the fiber into it. Ideally, we did bring in an underground contractor to give them a price on building city-owned fiber at all three locations, or four locations, so that you wouldn't be paying a monthly amount to AT&amp;T. You just order at one location. And Jesse's aware that, Justin, I'm sorry, is aware that that we, in the long term, owning your own fiber between the buildings was probably the best solution for yourself. And we have a company, two or three companies who could do that. And then you just order fiber on location, then it would transfer over, just like what you're saying, whether you fire from AT&amp;T or built there and sitting on fiber. So
Okay, Justin, what are the pros and cons of that?
Um, well, the cons are much. That's, that's and the 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 the, yeah, I mean, the 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 cost and the time and the materials to have some come in, go about fiber. But the pros, if that's, if that's county's fiber, if that's the state's fiber, then anything that's not lit, not being actively used, see, you don't, you don't just, you don't just bury or hate one little tiny string of fiber. Anything that's not being used, you can now negotiate lease agreements with other providers. You know, so they 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 pay for the privilege of using your fiber. And that's another, that's another revenue stream.
Yes, and that's
Um, we we would
We'd be responsible. We owned it.
Now, I
This, this is So Point all fingers towards that. I'm I'm sorry. And I know I'm trying, I'm just trying to get it as simple as my brain can handle today.
Yeah, and they gave you the fiber, I mean, the school had fiber to that modular building over there for two years, and then you had fiber in between all buildings. And for 18 years, it was, the maintenance was, one time, you had the big 1500 bucks because it got cut. It's not, it wasn't a huge chunk of money.
So if if you were to do, and I, Jesse, I'm guessing you couldn't do a fiber
So like the school, right, we we, somebody put the fiber in for us, but we base it, we don't actually build it. And the the purpose of that is, it becomes somebody else's problem that the school doesn't have to come up. If it's damaged, they for it. It's it's the other company's problem. There's a ton of companies that will come and put a fiber for you. The benefit to doing more like AT&amp;T is, they kind of have the fiber around their hangings, and if they actually get it out of town, they're spreading their fiber network to benefit. And if they actually get it out of town, they're spreading their fiber network to benefit. We can work to the A home by like the schooling, I have fiber that anybody can lease, but it's pointless if it goes to that building.
Yeah, and what we wanted was something that would benefit the whole community.
And i- if we did, we tried to get the, the fiber to come this way, this way. Uh, to, so the county could, that's what I, but, uh, the cost of the poles too much. There's reasons.
And speaking of the, you know, benefits, you know, that's the main reason that I brought another internet company out to town to have competition. And then that way, when there's competition, things always go better. And I know that N N I S just a couple of weeks ago sent out the thing, higher speeds for the same cost. And right there, competition. It's really helped everyone in the community, so benefiting the whole community. So, I think that no matter what happens, we started this process and hopefully we'll be getting faster internet to the county offices, here, sure.
So.
But the question just got.
Yeah.
So you guys have some full work, or, or security. We, we do that right now with, um, Lander or their, their fire suppression cameras that they have. And we give the fire entity access or, or municipalities access to these cameras, their P T Z cameras, so you can turn. Okay, yeah, I've got close to sixty cameras.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we always have had multiple different entities, cam systems on the network. That's not a problem.
So we have a proposal from AT&T for fiber for one amount. If we were to get a proposal from Sky Fiber for fiber, is it comparable? Is it less? And I realize you can't tell me all, but I don't think, I think we need to have that comparison.
Um, yeah, we can, we can absolutely.
And.
And that was, well, that was the, cause when you get fiber, fiber is kind of a different thing. We initially contacted Justin, we just wanted to get you up and going and going wireless between the buildings, so it's the quickest, easiest.
Right.
Get you going. Because when you go to switch over, it's not gonna be that big a deal. It's just a change on the router, reconfigure it and then switch it over to the fiber. So whenever you have time to get the fiber, but at least this would get you up and running. I mean, like, the city signed up around April fifteenth, by April twenty-ninth, they went from five nights to sixty nights. I mean, in two weeks. So that's all I'm hoping at, is, you know, trying to get you guys faster internet. And then you can look at the fiber and have Justin time on the same page, you know.
That's, that's, that's actually why we, I, I kicked off the planning for this already, because we weren't, we weren't able to move.
On the broadband.
On the broadband for a community solution. And we need something for our offices. And, and while, while I want, I want to help the community as much as I can, that's not what we really hired you to do. You, you hired me to support your, the, the county offices and staff.
Okay, but I'm looking at this from economic development.
Sure.
And.
And I think Heidi's on one, so if.
And I don't want to put a Band-Aid on it. I want to come in with something that will develop that if we get businesses out at the industrial parks.
Um, something to build on.
Yes, and I understand the need for just the county, but fiber, going with fiber would benefit the county and the whole community.
Sure. I mean, it's, um, yeah, and, and that's, that, that's, um, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll support however I can, however I can. That, um, that's, that's just a broader scope than, um, what are, what the immediate needs of our offices are. Um, so for, for, from a community prospect, um, pro- probably bring, absolutely bringing fiber. Um, or, or, um, there, there's, there's other wireless technologies too, like, you know, the, the, um, C D R S, the community, the citizens broadband radio service, where buildings start putting micro cellular towers on their roofs and build out mesh networks by everybody working together and cooperating together. There's all sorts of ways we can do that. Um, fi- fiber is just the, 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 the best. I, I'm with you. I don't wanna, I don't wanna Band-Aid it.
Yeah. I want to move forward.
Also, in the meantime, I mean, by switching to this wireless, you're gonna save a bunch of money on your, if you switch to that, cause the phones are the next thing on the list. If you switch to voice over I P, the cost savings, I think, on, uh, AT&T, it's gonna be what, something like thirty thousand a year?
That was every, what, what you were seeing was everything that we paid to AT&T. I think the biggest expenses we paid to AT&T are actually for nine-one-one services and those, those stayed with AT&T. But I mean, it, it would be, it would be a significant cost savings for our phone. There's, there's no question about that. Well, no matter what we, no matter what we do, um, by, I do, e- even, even AT&T is partnering with a voice over I P service uh, for, for their business, boy, proposals now, because it's just so much cheaper than traditional twelve. Yeah, but we can get to that.
Still have to look at the bottom line. Yes, yes, AT&T's mega price would be better for fiber. But you still gotta look at the cost.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out whether AT&T fiber or going to fiber through you guys would be comparable, and I need an answer to that. In the meantime, um.
But what he was saying about the two-year, right, and if we roll over a few seconds ago with us and fiber, that could roll over into that.
But we don't have a, a, a comparable right now with your fiber. And I'm not asking for one, cause you can't do it without. But what the fiber would be with you versus AT&T?
It would seem like it had two separate projects.
But, but, but to commit to you for three years, I need to know what that fiber would cost us, because then we would roll over to the fiber with you versus AT&T. Whereas right now, I'm looking at N N I S because it's a little bit less and they will do month to month, so that once AT&T is in or even you, then we could terminate the agreement with them and then do the fiber. So it's a temporary thing. So I'm thinking I need a proposal for the fiber.
So let's, let's talk in theory then. Say you order a service from us and then you say you wanted to do fiber eventually. We, we contract with AT&T all over the state and most likely that, or it's gonna go out to bid, we'll have a few co- uh, companies bidding on it. If you wanna have, we will most likely have them build out fiber to all these locations that you would like to see also. And generally, because we, we order so much in bulk across the West with AT&T, our pricing is usually at least thirty percent below their market price. So I, I will not, no, have a, uh, an answer for that until I actually put in a request. I was, was under the impression this was time sensitive because you guys.
It, it, it is, and we need to make a decision regarding the temporary solution.
Oh.
Whether the temporary solution is month to month or three years, but if we transition to fiber, we're gonna go fiber no matter what. Whether we go AT&T or we do something else. And we're locked in with you for three years for this temporary solution.
Right.
And if we can transition to fiber, you know, and do that, but I, I don't know.
It's also possible would require notice and advertising.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But, but we have funding through the American uh, Rescue Plan that we can use that money for this. And that's, that's our number one priority. It's a one-time shot, yeah.
And I don't, I, I, I don't, I, I'm not a hundred percent on how the, the, the capital improvements funding work, but the, the proposals for telephone are significantly less than what the capital improvements can, can be budgeted for, and some upgrade. And they're so, they're so close in time, you have to have the internet for these phone systems. That there's probably a little money in that project that would be done, that would be.
Yeah, but if, but I would rather use the American, um, Rescue Plan funds for whatever it's gonna cost us for fiber.
Sure.
And I mean, it's reasonable in there, plus we can do the other things that we need to do. So this is, but we need a, a fix right now for the other. So that's where I am right now.
So kind of, kind of based on what you're all telling me. It kind of seems like the, the, the best solution is to right, for right now, go with N N I S.
That's what I'm looking.
And then start the process for, um, the bigger project, fiber to fiber, fiber to the community that covers, um, our facilities, goes out to the industrial park to get that shovel ready. Things like that.
Yes.
And then that's, that's where we can, we can have, cause we've already started, we've already started conversations with AT&T through A T P. And we can have, we can have Sky Fiber in those conversations as well, competition and.
Um. I, I want us to do what's most economically good for the community and gives us what we need. And we only have this funding for two years, so we can't spread this out for five years. It's something that needs to start right away and, and go forward.
So, um, Ha- Heidi, I see that you're on the phone. Does that sound like a viable plan to you as well? She might not actually be at her.
Yeah, I know, she might be slipped away for a minute.
I can almost guarantee that Sky Fiber could do a one-year contract with the same proposal. Um, if that makes it any easier here than transition, then bid on the fiber side of it when, when it comes up. Uh, when we have that, you know, apples to apples person, what we're trying to get.
So what is the difference between Sky Fiber and N N I S? Because there's like a two thousand, not quite two thousand.
So.
Um. About fifteen hundred dollar difference or so, yeah.
The, the, the big difference in the pricing, you can take the maintenance out is the installation costs, which I don't have an itemized list of, uh, equipment um, from either vendor. So they, they would, they would have to.
But the service, the, the level of service is the same, yes. Correct? I mean, by that, I mean, the internet speeds and, and everything.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would be confident that um, either, either provider could, um, provide us with, with excellent service at this level.
And N N I S already has the, the dishes up and everything like that. It's just a matter of changing the speeds, right?
Right. And, um, yeah, and the, I, I, there's, there's some installations, there's some.
Yeah, double, between a couple of buildings, but we have that.
Okay. So I'm thinking N N I S at this point, and then let's look at the fiber and get more proposed. So I, I don't know. I mean, if it's, if it's like for life.
So Carol, can I ask a question? If we're gonna use the American Recovery money for all of this, it's out to July first, correct?
Yes.
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 Just making sure that date is out there so we know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that ring.
Right.
Everything have to be asked on July first.
Every, every vendor we're hearing from today, um, they are all aware that we wouldn't be starting period until July first.
So like.
Other things that, that I thought, so there's a lot of things that has to be done that's not, you know, starting to be.
So if N N I S, for instance, would not be covered under these funds because it's not broadband?
Um, but I mean, what I see is definitions broadband, so I don't know what.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, as long as it is under that definition.
Typically, typically, those, those, um, re- restrictions are based on the government, the government's own definition of broadband, which is actually pretty loose. Basically, no matter what, what means of transport, so long as you need at least five minutes down and three minutes up, you're considered broadband.
So then it would be covered under this, their, their proposal would be covered. And then when we go to the actual fiber part, that will be covered as well.
Right.
Okay.
You have, you've got fixed wireless versus.
All right.
You were trying to make comments, you have a comment, Amanda? Oh?
I just believe, I don't, when Carol said that his, his equipment is already up on the building, it's not between these four sites, right?
So I know he has radio on this building, I know he has radio, we share, so it's, do not have one on you. But don't we have him on the tab? Right.
As one of the. Which is not part of, part of this.
I think you're on the right track there, yeah.
It's only a fifteen hundred dollar difference or so, but yeah. Yes, yeah.
And then, um.
I don't know how you.
Name the N I S price can schedule time where we sit down and talk about what steps we need to take for fiber.
Sure, for the bidding process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we need to do that very timely. And I know you, Guy, you don't need more work, but, um, are, are you okay?
Or next month.
That's it's fine as long as we look at, at.
Oh, no, I want fiber.
Fiber.
Yeah. So right now, I'll just make a motion that we improve going forward with N N I S's wireless L A N and internet with the understanding that it's twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars that, um, it's month to month, so that once we get the fiber in as quickly as we can, then we can terminate that and we'll go forward with doing, um, bidding. Well, I can't make that motion, it might be on the agenda. So that's my motion.
Second.
Does a motion in a second, I'll look there.
I'm sorry. I'm tired, I'm tired. Amanda, thank you, and thank you very much for everything, because you guys, but you can still get in on the fiber part, please.
And as, as soon as I have, uh, the process that I need to take, I'll reach out to you guys.
I'm just glad you guys are communicating.
Oh, yeah, I.
When I started back in February, this, and that was kind of cool.
Yeah.
I could not believe that the county offices are still on.
Yeah, in the dark ages, yes.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna join the twenty-first century.
Do our best anyway, but thank you, really. And we'll see what happens. Okay. This is not, I am tired today and it's a little hot.
Anything else?
Uh, non, just right now.
Remember, we've got the phones, right?
Yeah.
Can I, guys, explain the folks to be very simple language?
I am, I am very happy that, um, we have, well, our, our Vantage guys, oh, it's, it's, it's cash flow. So I, I will have momentarily all three vendors here.
Wow.
Um, I haven't had a lot of time to review these proposals, cause they all, they all got, uh, I got all the final documents yesterday. Um, so, um, what I would like to do is I would like to have, um, each vendor kind of go through their, their own proposal. Each vendor kind of go through their proposal, their own proposal, since they're all here. Um and then I can, I can learn right along with yet. So. Glenn, do you want to start this off?
Yeah.
Or?
I guess. From Carol?
Go ahead and start.
Okay, I'm Glenn from F C C Communications, and we're presenting a phone system for you guys today. And hopefully, we're gonna make a little bit decision a little bit easier. There's a lot of information we'll go through, there's four different proposals, so we'll have to go through them, so in your packet, they're stapled separately.
Right.
The first one on the top is the complete proposal that shows you the phones and all the good stuff that goes along with it, but then I kind of condensed it down to just the meat of the subject. Where the the pricing, which is what you want to look at. So the first one is what, about six pages? And that's uh. The last one, the very last one is the first thing we're gonna go through.
So.
So is it?
What number are you talking about?
Is it the one that was in the purple folder? Yeah.
So if you look at the two green boxes right here.
Yes.
You're gonna see one that has a one time cost of forty four thousand.
Okay.
And then nineteen hundred a month, nineteen forty seven ninety nine.
Okay.
Okay, so uh again, Jason Leather, Star Star, uh partner of F C C here, and we've got the pleasure of meeting you guys, what, two weeks ago, or remember? Exactly, so I'm delighted to be back, and I thank you guys for that, and thank you just.
That was not switching.
That's okay. Um, so, from the understandings, I'm, I thank you guys for having Internet, I took down some notes. The biggest and kind of, I like to say, that we can provide on two of these proposals. And I built four different solutions for you guys, whatever makes most sense for you guys. Um but we have what's called Starbucks, that's gonna go onsite on appliance, okay, on your top, I think it's seven out of ten facilities. Which is actually more of an S D way for voice, so depending on latency jitter packets that you're gonna get from a radio wave. From cellular, maybe even fiber, that to us doesn't really matter. Because what we're gonna do is we can actually condense data packets and give it more to the voice side than the data side. So we can actually guarantee the quality of service that nobody else can, because everybody else is gonna provide a host of that's. You know, it's gonna be the best effort over the internet, okay, there's no box to say I have two mics coming in, twenty mics coming in. I got latency packet drops, so that could affect the voice, and if you're on the phone at the same time talking to somebody, it could and. You know, kind of drops in and out. With the Starbucks, I'm gonna grab X amount of data for the voice to guarantee that. So our S L A's that are built into this, unlike anybody else's, is gonna guarantee that voice quality. We have a guarantee five nine, okay, so when you look at S L A's, you want to compare everybody's uptime, their Q O S. Ours is five nines, and all the other host projects would be four nine, so that's one thing to to take in consideration. So depending on who you go with the internet, and you switch it over from wireless or the fiber, whatever, it's not gonna affect us at all. Um we're gonna give you the Q O S, I might which way you guys go, okay, so you won't be affected by any latency jitter downtime with them. So let's kind of get into the first order of rate, this one here is an all in. What we're gonna do on the second page, if you turn it over real quick. So we now. Right there, yeah, so. This here at the top is all the one time charges, these are the Starbucks I talked about, these are the activations on the ports through our switch data centers. This is also the purchase of all phones, the hardware, okay? Uh we're also going to add and replace the network switches. And give you guys a hundred percent Q O S with that and manual switches, so if you guys ever need support on anything, we can log into that system. Or Glenn can, who's local support for you guys, and actually fix that, so there's no need to ever spend another dollar to come on site to fix anything ever again. There is no other charges for ongoing maintenance after this. Okay, so everything can be done remotely, um if there is a new phone that needs to be swapped out, any piece of hardware is lifetime guaranteed for you guys. So from a hardware perspective, if anything ever fails, gets dropped, water, coffee spilled, I'm gonna replace that next day for free. For you guys, and that's the life of it, okay? So you don't have to budget three years down the road, four years down the road, for the new hardware, anything like that, we'll just keep replenishing that at no cost for you guys, okay? Now, with that being said, this is kind of where the proposals are kind of different, um and. On the one time, if you go back to those green boxes, which is on the first page right here. The forty four thousand is a one time cost of everything you see under that balloon. That's the hardware, that's the activations, that's the Starbucks, that's four G, that's everything, so. If that is, if you guys wanna pay that upfront, your monthly would be nineteen forty seven, which would save you guys, if I remember right, a thousand dollars. About a thousand or twelve, eleven hundred bucks a month, okay? Now, I'm also giving you guys an option where to pay zero upfront. And lease it, which would add another nine hundred fifty two dollars a month with zero upfront, so you wouldn't have to pay anything out of pocket.
So see right below nineteen hundred, there's nine fifty two, so if you wanna um just have it no cost to begin with. And I don't know how the money works, you said you're gonna use the recovery fund money for it.
No, for for this particular project, we have in our capital improvements, we put money aside, it's only for the internet broadband.
We weren't sure, so we gave you a bunch of different proposals, that's what I was trying to.
No, we we put the money aside in capital improvements, so my question is, when you. When you do all of this, is the cost more or less? When, like, I would rather pay more upfront and pay less per month, if we're gonna save money in the long run versus. Um but I I'll be truthful with you, right now, I cannot calculate out at that I'm saving, you know, when I compare all this. So that's my question to you.
So if you guys want a capital expenditure upfront, you'd pay the forty four thousand on on this bit, okay, I have three others to go.
Yeah, which 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 bit is that?
So this is the forty four thousand, this is, we're gonna do the switches, all the hardware, the Starbucks is four G. Um and then I say about four G, if the internet does ever fail, and the backup does not kick into work, I can take voice and data over four G. Means your facilities will never be down, okay? So from a voice perspective, from a data, we can do both, it's primary voice, but we can also add data to that. So we can take that over the four G if it is that is meaning.
Yeah.
Now.
It's.
Got that.
I emailed it, it came in late.
Okay.
It should be the fact that I just.
So then these other proposals, are they exactly the same as far as installation and everything else?
A little bit, about ninety percent.
So is this the best? As far as.
From.
Service and everything?
Yes.
This is a typical, this is the one we do most often, where it's all paid upfront, and then you just have a monthly fee, kind of like if you just want a regular phone system. Like, for me, anywhere.
And then how long is the monthly fee locked in for?
So this right here is on a sixty month, okay?
Okay, for five years.
The first five months of this is completely free.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, oh, I remember you saying.
Yeah, so upfront, right there, it's ten thousand dollars, first five months you guys get saved.
Okay.
Okay, now.
I'm seeing something different.
Yep.
Under the same quote, twenty nine eight oh four.
No, that's a different one, so the one I'm looking at here is the forty four.
Twenty nine eight oh four.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, the quote note, yes.
Is.
Twenty nine.
There's one here at thirty one oh six eight, and then you have one you add for forty four.
Yep.
What's the difference between the two?
Okay, so, do we want to, we just gotta go through the comparisons real quick?
Yeah, because I'm seeing a forty four and the other one.
It's in holder, purple folder, did you take it out of there? You didn't, never mind, I thought you did.
So let me, let me clarify. So there's two different types of proposals, the two proposals from two, those two different types. One is called a hosted solution, hosted solution is is we don't have the Starbucks's in the building, where it uh does traffic shaping and stuff. So basically, set a file on your desk, and we have best effort how the internet's gonna handle it. That's hosted solution, ones I would prefer have is the Starbucks, that have the Starbucks in your building. And then does the traffic shaping for you, so you don't get the jitter and the problem with the with the system.
And that also comes.
So that, just as you handed that to me, I'm a clip, these quotes are from six eleven, this quote is from six sixteen. That's the dollar amount difference I'm saying.
That's the newer quote.
Yeah, he did it last night.
I just did it last night, because somebody, I think he wanted it missed, yeah.
There's no forty four in here.
Well, that's the way the the quoting system works, it's.
Okay.
So it isn't in the folder.
I I.
So the first one we're talking about, my recommendation on this would be, we're redoing all the phones, all the switches for the most optimal. The four G, so no matter what happens to the internet, you guys, you guys are never down, okay? Worst case scenario, you might lose a phone call, but you can just pick it right back up, and it's instantly over the four G, okay? Now, if you go with the lease, not paid upfront, okay? After the sixty months, that nine hundred drops off, and it goes back down to nineteen hundred, so instantly you save a thousand dollars a month, because now you own everything. But if you purchase upfront, your your savings right now is a little over a thousand dollars a month, from what you're paying today.
Okay.
Okay, but, so that is on the first one, okay? So the next one I'm gonna go to says thirty one thousand sixty eight upfront, and then twenty two eight three. In the green boxes, and that is twenty nine eight oh four again. These are identical, the one that I just showed you to this, all I did was move money around for a lower capital and a little bit more OpEx. So I'm giving you just options from a CapEx and OpEx, that's all I'm doing, nothing changes except from my financial budget upfront or OpEx.
Well, we do the the one, the upfront, you know.
So.
So we'd have a lower monthly.
Okay, so that would be the first thing we looked at, so, I'm not gonna really get into detail the second one, all it is, is moving from CapEx a little down, OpEx up, that's the only difference for you guys. It still has all the switches, the phones, the four G, Starbucks, everything for you guys.
They have, we have the switches all included. Because you don't have a side switch.
Because we had no idea.
And Justin, I think about that too, is if anything ever happens, I'm gonna replace that for free, for life, ever, yep. Okay, um the next one, let's start with the thirty five thousand six thirty and the sixteen forty seven. That is three four six six zero. Now, this here is a complete hosted solution. Twenty three, no, thirty five, yeah, so that was the one that.
So many of them.
Yeah. I'm giving you two solutions, but then two options I need for, just for a financial. Yeah, that's the one, okay, this here is going to be in comparison to our members, okay? This here is purely hopes, there's no S L A's, there's no guarantees, because we are dependent upon your internet providers. If that be, is it N N I S, A T and T, whoever that is at the time you need to switch over, we are a hundred percent reliable upon them. And every carrier you hear from going forward will be the same way, okay? The only difference is, on the other ones, we can now traffic shape and guarantee the voice quality, no matter what happens to the internet, and we can fill it over to four G. This here, if the internet fails, phones fail. Okay, so you're a hundred percent dependent upon your I S P.
So we're trying to make it apples to apples as much as we can, because it's confusing.
Yeah.
It really is.
The difference. So here's a difference.
So many uh acronyms and so many things, I mean, he's really good at going through all that stuff, but.
The difference per month to have a guarantee for voice and data, if you want it, is three hundred dollars a month. Nineteen hundred, sixteen hundred, it's actually exactly three hundred dollars difference a month to have a guarantee. And reliability, so it does not matter really to us, um which way you guys go, but from a disaster recovery, from a safety and a guarantee. The first ones that we talked about would be my recommendation to guarantee uptime and reliability, um and that is also built into our S L A's, we have that.
Your.
Yep. So we actually do a dual LAN, which is two different carriers, what we're gonna do is, if you guys do choose service, or we'll come out here and do test. The Verizon, A T and T, T Mobile, whoever your top four or five providers are.
Which one's the best, Verizon, I'm hearing.
Okay, so after those tests are done, we will go to those carriers, we'll get the LAN cards, put them in, that's all on us. So we will take the top two providers and put those slot cards in on the four G. Yep, yeah, what happens on the four G is every five milliseconds, it's ping in the towers to make sure the signal's strong enough, just in case that I S P goes down. So our traffic shaping box knows which way to send the voice and data after that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you stand there for, Bill?
Well, this was an old one, was fifty nine thousand, Rain, do you know what we have in capital? Okay, it is, okay.
There's not a lot of money left to the drilling side.
No, and I know that, yeah.
So you want a zero upfront, right?
Yeah.
So, between the first two, it is the reliability, it's a guarantee for you guys. Um if you guys want the guarantee and not have to worry about relying upon anybody else for your voice and data too. I would choose the first one for three hundred dollars a month, I know over here, we're talking thirty six hundred, but that's why I gave you the hosted as well, so you can have more than apples to apples with everybody. Again, hardware also included in both of these for lifetime. Okay, the second one only has phones, the first one has the networking, the four G and Starbucks's, that we will take care of for life. Here, all you have to worry about are phones, but we'll take care of the phones if anything happens to phones, so now.
So my question is, let's say we grow, what is it gonna cost to add to this?
Cause it's call me up and I'll send you a phone.
But, and but there is a cost to the phone.
There is.
So. And then also a cost to adding that phone to the system, right?
So think of about twenty dollars a user.
So here's the, here's the fees for uh monthly recurring.
Okay.
So it'd be eleven dollars and ninety nine cents per user.
Per additional.
But the system can handle any number of phones?
Yes.
As we increase.
Thousand or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, what we did is, if you look on the original, so on the hosted, it's all about internet bandwidth, okay? Their lines are gone, I don't have to worry about lines, this is all about space data, and I'm not tying anything up here on site, everything is now in our data centers, our cloud. So you can have a hundred people on hold, still not taking up any bandwidth on site here, okay? On the other side here, same way, okay? Just more reliability, um but again, you gotta look at that eleven ninety nine, but you have a star seat, which is the dial tone for the box, so think twenty dollars a user. Okay, so if you added one first at site, you need that phone, here you go. Okay, you can lease the phone, if you guys go and lease one, or if you wanna purchase the phone, it's a new one, you purchased the phone at that time.
And then um what does the phone's cost about?
So we have the ones that we talked about last time, let's talk about the conference room phones, I know Larry, you're a big one, that you wanna be able to move it. It is a deck phone, it's a wireless Bluetooth to the, to the side, to have a base station here, I can move it anywhere in this room that I wanted to, okay? That runs five fifty nine.
Okay.
Two hundred and three there.
Okay, alright, great.
Your deck, the fifty six, those are the wireless. Okay, right, we have mobile stations out there, other locations that are going to use that. Now, the T fifty three, what's really neat about these, at any given time, I do not need a cat five, cat six cable coming in here for bad internet. If you guys, they're going to be on the desk, we'll, that's, I always say, let's do that in the beginning, okay. But you can take these phones, take them home, they are wireless phones, okay. So you can actually plug them in. And you don't need to be next to your router at home or in their office. All you got to do is have a power source next to the wifi. So this phone here gives you the option to be wired or wireless, which I think in today's world would happen in last year. If that something like that ever happens again, this phone here, you don't have to go out and purchase new hardware. To do the, do it all over.
That's kind of where we were talking about having a phone in here.
Yep.
For a conference call. Where we don't have to string the cord.
Correct.
Disconnect another phone over there.
You got it, yeah, yep. Yeah, so the bigger phones in that conference phone are all movable. They can, they're all decked as well, so they can be Bluetooth, wifi, whatever is what you want to do. Yes. And again, anything ever happens to those, I'm going to replace them and it'll cost to you guys next day.
Okay.
Still.
So here's the.
There's a wireless phone that we are presented, the Galant fifty six. And then here are the desk phones, the T fifty threes, again, those are also wireless, okay.
And we just went with this because we're trying to again do the apples for apples. They have color options.
Too many decisions to make.
It could be a lot, yes.
So that little guy.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, so that is just a deck phone, you can move it wherever you want and be hardwired into that. That, so, yes and no. I think we have a quantity of nine. Yeah, so every, from what Justin told us, every place you guys might need one of those, we added that in. So you don't, you actually don't have to move any of these phones if the number is correct. But if we're missing one, we have one extra, we can add or we can relocate when it's all set up. So.
They can move around.
But the biggest thing again that we're going to provide here is the redundancy, four G built in, guaranteed QOS and the five nines. Okay, that is on our hybrid. That's the first two that we talked about. The fully hosted again, that you're going to see the next two is completely based upon your internet provider. So they go down, phones go down, for the three hundred month, I would go toward the hybrid. Um, because then you guys have the guarantee. That'd be.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, that was easy. No, I have to have it. Yeah.
I thank you guys.
I just wanted to make sure the phones weren't going to cost us twenty thousand dollars a piece or something, when we added one, you know.
Yep. It's a very low, low cost.
Yeah.
And if you guys do go with the lease option too, there's, you know, there's nothing upfront at all. It just goes into monthly billing and just keeps going.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so, um. Wants, wants to, to talk, otherwise we can just go over what Uma presents.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, good, thank you.
Oh, good. Okay. Hey, thanks for teaching me all about mining and get those kids to stop skateboarding in that place. Everything good? Okay, so do you have my proposal in front? I apologize on that area. I was trying to make it out there, but tomorrow's the, the first time I can make it out to Reno. I won't be there until tomorrow, so I'm missing it.
We have it, thank you.
Yeah, sure. So let me just run through a couple of things. Justin and I have been working together here for a couple of months. In fact, we, through our discovery, we, this is why we came up with those particular phones. Uh, that you just heard about, and you know, we did a site survey and all the buildings and all that. And I'm not an agent. I don't know if you've heard of Uma, but Uma is a very popular. Uh, VoIP provider. In fact, we've been voted number one by DC Magazine, which is kind of the quintessential IT magazine. And we've been voted number one for nine years straight in this space, so we know what we're doing. And a lot of it has to do with, um, a few innovative ideas, but mainly just the ease of provisioning and. And, and the ease of use and, and all that, and, um. A lot of large accounts, you know, if you've heard of Regis, they've got twenty thousand locations all over the world. We support all of their locations. We do eBay, Slack, you know, PayPal. Um, we're a very popular brand, um, in the VoIP arena. And one of the things, uh, my counterparts mentioned was the, um. You know, the disaster recovery or the, the guaranteed, uh, service. And that's something that has always been the Achilles' heel on VoIP providers, is you're always relying on the internet. Uh, but luckily, um, we did come out with something called Uma Connect. Which is similar to the little box they were talking about, they were selling this little box for, you know, Verizon or whatever. Ours is actually proprietary to our phones, and we put it on site. And what happens is, if, if you remember what they were saying, that, you know, you get an internet failover. So if your internet goes out, it takes about a minute, and then it fails over to the wireless carrier. Uh, but what we do is a little bit different, where you're making a phone call and you're running over your internet connection. But at the same time, our little box is taking your conversation, it's actually sending it over the cell tower simultaneously. And it's piecing it back together on the other end of the phone call. And what that means is your internet can go out in the middle of a phone call and you wouldn't notice. Because you've got basically two conversations, two copies of your conversation happening at once. So that's a really cool. Uh, product that we launched about a year ago. And we've got, um. Thousands and thousands of those deployed, TJ Maxx, Ross Stores, Marshall Stores, all those, they all, um, have those in place. That's a really cool little system. Now, with all of these, your, uh. Your functionality is going to be quite a bit different, because not only are these phones on desks, you can pick it up, make a phone call, just like any other phone. Um, but all of your people will have the ability to instant message each other. Um, download an app onto their cell phone, so when they're out of the office, if somebody calls their desk, it can ring on their phone. They can see somebody's calling their desk and they can answer it, transfer, uh, do all the things. Um, also video chat, a, a lot of really neat things that, uh, that this is going to provide for you at a, a very cost effective rate. Now, getting to the actual numbers, let me look it up here. So are you looking at our proposal now?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this was based on, like we said, with Justin was, originally it was only about fifty five phones, and then they expanded it to. Um, the entirety of the county. So here we've got a few things. Um, you, you got your typical, you know, our, our essentials licenses, which is the nineteen bucks. Uh, which for every seat, and that's the only, that's the only monthly fee per seat. There's no other extra. Um, fees outside of taxes and all that kind of stuff. Um, and then for the regular courtesy phones, it's just a flat twelve ninety nine. Those are for the, those conference phones that, you know, that, uh, we were looking at. Um, those don't need a lot of fancy features, you just need to be able to make a phone call, so that's a regular basic fee. So it's right around two thousand bucks a month or so. And then for the equipment, um, oh, before I get to that, there's something else here that. Um, we have on our proposal here that wasn't on the first one, which is something called Microsoft Teams. Port. Now, you guys know what Microsoft Teams is, the like video collaboration things that you guys use?
Yes.
Okay, so Teams can actually be turned into a phone service. And, um, when you use Teams, there oftentimes you've got people that need to dial in. And right now that's impossible, um, unless they're in front of a computer or whatever, or maybe using the app. They want to be able to just be able to dial in like any other conference bridge. So we added five, um, voice channels into your Microsoft team, so that people would be able to dial in on those calls. Without having to be in front of their computer and whatnot. So that's also in here. And then, uh, the rest of it is, let's see. Connects, uh, professional install, da, 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 da. The yellings, we got priced out a hundred thirty six dollars a piece, um, that's for life. Um, with Uma, when you, when you, um, you know, get put on board with Uma, you get a dedicated account manager. That's assigned along with your project manager for install, and then account managers kind of takes care of you going forward. And, um, your price structure is always in there, so whenever you order a new phone, it'll all be the same, or they'll, they'll recommend other phones. Again, the reason I went with the T fifty three is because it's wireless enabled. And it's also PoE enabled, so if you're close to an ethernet switch, you can, or an ethernet cable, you just plug in the back of the phone and you're, you're good to go. Um, but also like Dustin said, he wanted a phone in that room that you're in now. So I went with a fifty three, so that you just punch in the wifi password and, and there you go, there you got your phone. So it's ea- easy. Now, these things are called over the top, which means any internet connection works, they don't really care. So people could technically take this phone home, plug it into the internet at home. Or if somebody moves to another office, you just pick up the phone, uh, take it in there, plug it in again, and it. Bails back into mama, mama says, oh, that's you, here's all your settings and your speed dials and all that stuff, takes about thirty seconds and boom, your phone is done. No moves, ads, changes, things like that, that's all, uh, very, very simple. And this is more of a sales feature for Justin, because he's the one that's going to have to work with us and do this. But our, um, our admin portal is very easy, it's kind of drag and drop picture related. So you just drag things over different, you know, virtual receptionists and all these things. It's just very, very easy to, um, to administer and to provision phones and all that kind of stuff. It's due to, you know, Justin's limited bandwidth. Um, it was very important that we had all hands on deck to not only get the phones installed and provisioned, but to make it very easy for him to. Uh, to make changes, because he's a limited resource, he's supporting the whole. Um, that's why we went with this solution. And then, uh, let's see, lastly. Um, yeah, cordless phones, the same, base station's the same. Um, you can see our total non-recurring charges, that's for all the equipment. The only thing that I do want to mention is the, uh, well, number one, this is a three year term. And, uh, for the Uma connects, those boxes that I'm popping about with the internet failover and all that. The reason I kept it off here, um, and it's about the same price, same like three hundred bucks a month or whatever. Uh, but the reason I kept it off is because, uh, I can do that portion of it without a contract. Where we could just rent the equipment, no contract, and stop using it, Justin can just mail it back to us. And that way, when you do, um, get into, you know, your, your fiber installations and your wireless and all that. There's a good chance that, um, you know, a combination of like the AT&amp;T fiber and Sky Fiber or something like that, might be a great. Um, backup redundant scenario as is. And you might not need these for, you know, three years, five years, something like that. So this will give you an opportunity to drop that when it's no longer necessary. So I wanted to keep that off of the thirty six month. Any questions so far?
I don't.
Okay, and then, uh, that takes care of numbers. And, uh, let's see, I, I don't want to feature dump on you, but, um, Dustin and I didn't have quite a bit of discovery. And also, um, it's worth mentioning that, again, I'm not an agent, I'm a solutions architect directly with Uma. And it just so happens that you guys are very lucky, because our number one sales engineer, in fact, the manager, national manager for all our sales engineers. Is a guy named Don Castleman, and he happens to live in Reno. So he's actually going to come out there and do a site survey himself. Um, if you decide to go forward, because he's, he's right there, it's right in his backyard. So, um, that's a nice, uh, bonus for you guys as well. Now back up, da, da, I think that's the end of my sales pitch. Is there any, uh, other questions about Uma? Or me, or anything else?
You'd need to come up here.
Is there an additional cost for usage of internet?
Our internet, yeah, so there's, uh, something, our Uma connect box is twenty nine bucks a month. Um, so you can do that times ten or eleven. And then for the equipment, you can rent that for fifteen dollars a month. But I talked to people already, I could probably get the equipment fee waived, so it would just be the twenty nine bucks a month times, you know, ten. And that's going to give you that, um, failover, where it's watching your AT&amp;T circuit or whatever you have. And then failing over and, and sending your voice packets out the cell towers as well.
Is there an additional for use, for internet usage though, too?
Is there additional for internet usage?
Yeah, because if you're using a, a bandwidth like that, you would use that or two with you.
If you're using this, yeah, so the, the twenty nine dollar one gives you ten gigs, which would be for each department. You know, some people can go ten gigs all month, uh, depending on what they're doing. Um, i- if you're down for a couple of days, you're not going to come anywhere close to it. I mean, we bumped to a ninety nine dollar one, and I thought about putting a ninety nine dollar one on there, but I don't think that's necessary. Twenty nine dollar one is more than, more than plenty.
And then if there's a problem with the phone, is it, we have to have it replaced in our cost?
That's an excellent question. These have, uh, one to two year agreements. Uh, but you'll work with, uh, your dedicated account manager. And more often than not, they'll just swap it out and send you one. Um, I've seen that more often. I can't guarantee that, but it depends. But if you guys have, you know, a hundred phones and. One phone just breaks, they'll probably just send you another one.
Okay. And then as far as maintenance, um, if something goes wrong with the system, that's all included in the monthly fee and everything?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. That's a, you know, it's kind of a default way of thinking, because we're used to having equipment on site. There is no equipment on site, so there is no maintenance. Our maintenance is seven different data centers all over the world. That replicate your phone calls the whole time, so you never really have to worry about.
So, but there is hardware and stuff that you, that you put here, like the router and stuff?
Um, not really, this is over the top, and we just configure your, uh. You know, the routers that you have in place, you open up a couple of ports on the firewall, we do some things like that. But again, this is called over the top. So, um, we don't need it to go through our own equipment in order for it to work. In fact, more often than not, we don't. Um, I've got a suicide prevention center that has two hundred people, everybody's working from home. Uh, they just brought their equipment home, all that. Not to mention, you know, if you have a, if you have a computer at home or a laptop. You can even just, you, you download this app onto your laptop, and that can become your phone when you're working from home. Uh, or you just download the app onto your smartphone and do it that way. So it's all software driven.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, uh, who are, who's responsible for the switches for the system?
He's going to repeat the question.
Who's responsible for the switches, the network switches in the system? Is that just Justin or?
Yeah, that's Justin.
Okay.
So luckily our, you can see our equipment proposal is, is way under what you have budgeted, so he's. Plenty of space to upgrade as he needs, we talked about that. But again, it's, it's pretty straightforward, and these phones don't use a lot of bandwidth, and it doesn't require a lot of heavy lifting in order to operate. Um, when you're making a phone call, it's, it's only using about a hundred and twenty K. So you don't need anything too major, although Dustin talked about, um. He was upgrading to PoE switches and things like that, which will take advantage of, but it's not necessary.
Yes.
Excellent question. So yes, fax is already included, so every extension will get a, a virtual fax, so. Um, somebody can fax directly to people and it'll show up as a PDF attachment. Uh, and also they can fax out of their computer. It also includes things like, um, dictated voicemails, so you can read when someone, you'll get emailed when somebody leaves you a voicemail and you can read through it. Um, it also includes web conferencing, so kind of like Zoom, like we're doing now. Everybody gets their own license for web conferencing, and it also includes amongst thirty five other features. Um, call recording, um, monitoring, um, unlimited phone calls. Um, unlimited phone calls, Canada, Mexico, United States, Puerto Rico. Uh, it's all included in that same nineteen dollar a month uh, charge.
Ian, I have a quick question for you. Um, on the non recurring terms, you have. Uh. The uh, desk phones, you have cordless handsets. Uh, but you don't have conference phones.
Oh, uh-oh. Is that on the latest one that I sent you?
I, the one, the one. Quote number twenty four sixty. So it's the one I got for me yesterday.
Okay, let me log in and. Did it in a hurry. So if that's the case, I'll have you pencil it in and I'll redo it and send it over. Um, they're like three hundred and thirty bucks.
So nine times three thirty?
Yeah.
Yes, what what model is, what model were those? Were those the nine thirties or the nine twenties?
Uh, CP. Let me look. Everyone we discussed.
Yeah. We talked, we talked about both at one point, but. We were trying to go over.
Yeah, which one did you put on the that um, voice info? Spreadsheet you gave me?
I, it should. I updated it to the nine third week and a half ago. Uh, right before, right before I uh, sent you the information, so. It hasn't, hasn't changed since I resent you.
Okay, and that's the. That's the one, actually easiest way. Let me just jump on my website real quick. We got it listed there. Hold please. Shop phones.
This meeting was going in front of the live studio audience.
Thank you very much.
All right, where is it? Where are my phones? Business phone. I get to my phones here. CP nine thirty, is that sound right?
Yes.
And we're good. Yeah, CP nine thirty.
Sure. That's we talked about with you guys.
Oh, good. So yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, that's the one.
And and are those the debt nine thirties or are they just hardware?
Uh, no, they are decked. We have a base station to go with it. However, you thought um. You've got base stations already in the proposal. So you're golden there.
And then uh. I have, I have, I have one last question and then there was another question in the audience.
Okay.
How much? And I'll actually start, start the same question. Um, how much space? Does the the Ooma connect box give up?
Uh, you mean like physical space?
Right, is is it, does it go into a rack or do I have to put it on the shelf somewhere and so on? How big are the physical?
Okay, great question. So let me think um. I uh, I'm gonna use my. My powers of deduction, my fancy Oxford degree to stare at this thing and. Tell you what it says. So it's um. It's about the size of a small book. Say it's about um. Eight and a half, nine inches by six inches by inch and a half. It's not very big. Okay, now that's for the modem. Now, this also comes with a twenty five foot cable and then it it goes to an antenna. It's called a MIMO antenna, so it's a really flat square. Um, you know, little device that's got some lights on it and that you just put up against the window or screw it into a wall. And that thing is uh. A little larger about the, about half the size of a computer monitor, about an inch thick and it comes with hardware to. Like I said, just to install onto the wall. Um, so you can do that or literally just lean it up against something, but if you put it up against the window, it gets the best signal. Now, that's the other thing. You guys are. Uh, really lucky because these things. Use either Sprint or T-Mobile. And you guys have a T-Mobile tower smack in the middle of your town, so you guys are in great shape.
And the.
Yep, so at a larger off here with. That's about maybe two inches wide or three than an iPhone. Okay, the the thousand is actually smaller than this. So there's nothing, you don't need rack space and go up behind a boat. Where your modem sits, it's gonna be plugged in extra, so it'll just sit on the shelf right next to it. And then the four G is same size as this as well with two little antennas. And then that has. I'm assuming T-Mobile Horizon as well.
Yeah, so the, yeah, this is different. This is more like a little modem and the antenna. Um, has eight different antennas inside it that are on slightly different frequencies to capture bandwidth and and to get a faster group like. So it's a little bit different.
Think and then yeah.
I just, I just wanted to make sure there's really on that deck phone. Uh, he said you guys already have base stations. Okay, so that is different following what we have. Ours is an actual true deck Bluetooth, meaning you don't have to have wireless signals throughout the building. Okay, ours is the, you just need the power plug, because the base station sits on is what is the actual charging base. When you pick it up off that and it Bluetooth to that base, you don't need to have bases around the office for that. I just wanna make sure that you're saying.
Yeah, and you don't have to have the.
Yeah.
Cable.
Cable coming out to it, yep.
Okay. Got it.
Did anyone have any more questions for David? All right.
That was easy. Nothing?
Thank you.
Thanks, David. David, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are.
Okay.
Let me make a few adjustments um. Last. The last provider, he had to, he had another phone call he had to get to, so he wasn't able to stick around. Um. So, uh, but this is, this is Vonage. Uh, this is another pretty uh. A pretty well-known phone provider. See here. So. Uh, the ki- kind of um, kind of the big difference is their solution is. Totally hosted in cloud.
Oh, okay.
Um, there is, there unlike Ooma and Star to Star, they don't have the. Um, the box that we can put in our telecom closet that will connect to the cell. Um, but like Star to Star and they both have, they also have a smartphone app that you can load on your phone. So if. The uh, if our internet, our internet were to go out, but cellular was still up, still making receive phone calls. And hand them off back and forth. Uh, their, their equipment, uh, they do on a rental basis. Um. So the, the yeah, the the daily drivers, the yelling phones. Um, they don't, uh, they wouldn't charge us upfront for those. Those would be included as part of our. Uh, monthly recurring price. The cordless phones and the conference phones, which did not make it onto the printout. Um. Uh, the the W, the cordless phones, the W fifty sixes are a dollar ninety nine. A month and then the conference phones are fourteen ninety nine. Fourteen. So fifteen dollars. Um. And then he he is available by email, so if you have questions, I can shoot them over to him and. Get your answers.
So the phones that they're providing are, they're not the same type?
They're the T forty two S. They're, they're, they're similar. Um, they, they are powerful for ethernet. Um. I believe that they need an adapter that just plugs in to be wireless. Um. But they, they'll like uh. Like the other phone, they do have a cable pass through. So you could. Uh, any, either of these phones, you can plug one cable into the phone. One cable from the phone to your computer and share that connection with me. Um, you can also, you could also take them home. They're just without the, without the extra adapter, they're not wireless. Um. I mean, that it's, it's, the this model phone is actually the phone that I'm using. That has, is out of museum and is um, in the safety office. Uh, all three of us are using that same model phone and it, it works just fine.
And it's all over the internet. It's all hosted.
It's completely hosted, yes, it's completely.
So if the internet goes down.
If the internet, if the internet in the building goes down. There are, there are, there's, you can, uh, we can. Um, we have access, it it's so long as this, as cellular stays up. Then we could, uh, either calls will automatically hand over to your phone. To your cellphone if you have the the uh, Vonage app installed. Uh, or. Uh, we can um, get into the system, we can start. Already. With, with my, with, with um. What I have for my office, I have the app on my phone and it actually rings both places whenever I get a phone call.
That's it, moving right.
Yeah, thank you. I thought.
If, if you guys go on cost, I hope the T forty two is supposed to stand at point five. Uh, so if you guys want to be on that phone. So we're, you know, we can get that second for you guys. Uh. But the difference between that phone cannot. So if you take it home, you have to make sure that the moon is within fifty bucks of the mirror. In the kitchen, you have to have. Or wire coming from your closet. Shelf all the way out and the ones that women we presented are hundred percent Bluetooth wireless. Uh. So I have to just plug it in, the power source, we can connect to any wifi at any given time. Well, I'm more happy if you guys want to see the difference in cost. I, we can give you that.
No, I don't want a lesser phone.
The difference in costs.
Yeah, what we're looking at is one is there's no installation. It's a monthly cost, correct, Vonage?
Right.
And then Ooma, I made all kinds of notes, but.
Yeah.
Uh.
Much better system.
Yeah, I think so too. And. In the long run. I like Star to Star.
I do too.
I do too.
And the fact that we've already had, we've done business with. FCC and um, and their work has been excellent. And I know we can rely on them. I'm worried about the others.
Um, the, I've been, I've been working with um, David and Andrea from Ooma. Since February getting this all together, they have been awesome to work with.
Okay.
Um, so my, my, my concern isn't with, my, I don't have concerns with Ooma about um, support. Um, I think, I think that both Star to Star and Ooma are willing to put boots on the grounds to help get this deployed. Is awesome. Um. With, with, with Vonage, there's, there's training, like a webinar training. Um, I have to find, uh, there, there's, there is onboarding. But uh, they didn't break out what that onboarding includes, whether it's actually people coming here to put phones on desks and. And help me get all the phones connected up, or whether they just send all the phones out and give me the instructions and say, have fun. So. Yeah, I, I, I think, I think either Ooma or Star to Star. Will agree.
Yeah, and can I interject? I want to remind you that we've literally been voted nine years in a row the number one in this space and that's because our support is. Amazing. So we're a Bay Area tech company that's been doing this for. Since two thousand eight, what's that, fourteen years now? Uh, started by founders of Facebook and Cisco. Um, this is all we do and we know what to do and we do it well.
So the monthly charge on Ooma would go up about. Three hundred and thirty dollars times nine. Anyway, it would go up.
The three hundred and thirty times nine, that's not.
No, no, right, yeah, so it's three hundred. It's, it's three hundred dollars. I'm sorry. So it's about three hundred, twenty, three hundred and sixty dollars a month, which is twenty eight thousand, three hundred and twenty. Which is, okay, about five thousand dollars a year. I said month, I'm tired. The difference in the annual service charges are about five thousand. A year between the two, so we would save five thousand a year going Star to Star.
Yeah, and then also if I can include our Starbucks, which I know we talked about the box, but again, it's. Run that in this way, and then send this way through cellular. Our Starbucks is gonna keep the SDN for voice, which I will be talking about. But if he's reliant on the internet, I don't have to be.
Yeah.
Even if the internet fails, I can still look around the halls. Uh, all the features, we talked about the apps, the big. That's all, you know, we talked about that last week. So, but the big thing is the difference, Starbucks is gonna guarantee the voice calling no matter if latency drops. Share the packets coming to the ISP that they can. So, in five months for.
Well, that's, that's, I, I don't know if that's really accurate, but our box has Q O S prioritization, so it recognizes when it's a phone call. And that gets prioritization off of the internet, so it's pretty much the same thing. I wouldn't worry about that. If it's just a matter of a few thousand dollars, I'm sure we can match that. That's no big deal. Ours is a three year contract. I might even be able to make that a two year contract. Um, and, and again, it's a safe bet. We've got literally millions of customers. By. No, it's.
Yes.
Mister Chair, I think we prefer presentations from both of these up.
I know you do. We're gonna move on and we're gonna move on. I think you're looking at, I think we're all three looking at the same.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is the money that we're gonna save in the five months. The installation is actually gonna come down to thirty four thousand. This one, the installation will be almost twenty because of the additional, so we're looking at fourteen thousand dollars difference. But in the long run, over a year, the service charges are five thousand.
Right.
So I'm looking at Star to Star. And so.
If it's just a matter of.
David, David, we're, 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 they're, they're trying to get their motion together. The, the presentation period is done. Thanks.
So um, I'll make a motion to go with Star to Star.
I'll second.
And it would come out with capital improvements, the installation.
Right. And you did second. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Sorry to come back twice, but I appreciate the information. Oh, good. All right.
Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit. We're gonna go to uh, under planning and building, we're gonna vote a number B. That's, somebody's in the audience.
Sorry about that.
No, no, thank you though.
Need to apologize to people that are here.
Yeah.
Be respectful of their time, but.
Yeah.
Um.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
If, if we can get the ones that are here.
Yeah. And thank you for waiting. We apologize. Those are big decisions and we need to ask all the questions. Okay, help us out here, James. I mush right now.
I don't blame you. This is a request to approve a parcel map for Julie Knight on APN seven four four one one four. She wants to divide it into one seventy-seven point four acres and one two and a half acre parcel. So she can sell the two and a half acre one that already has a house on it.
Because it already has a house on it.
And then the seventy-seven, the other parcel, will that, will that allow another house to be built on that?
The seventy-seven acres. It's, it's, it's at ground.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
It is, it's out there.
Okay, there's been a house in there before.
Well, you guys sound like you have that.
To be able to replace it. I don't want to give up the opportunity to put a house there later. Because there would still be a forty acre.
And that's what I'm asking. So she would be able to put another house or approve the one that's there or whatever on the seventy-seven.
If, if, if it's already existing.
Okay.
If what?
The house is already there. You wanted to improve it.
Well.
If, if, if that's something you want to do, you have to give up forty acres for
Yeah.
A building right for that other forty acres. Since she's got the seven.
So this, this one part on it that's carved out now, there's a house on that.
Up here, right.
Is that the existing house?
The two and a half acres.
The two and a half acres currently is the existing house.
Yeah.
And that's what you want to parcel off the seventy-seven acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm back to my original question. On the seventy-seven acres, is there a house now?
There is. There, there, there has been for many years. There's a little headquarters there with the shop and right now it's a burned out mobile home.
Okay, but so if she wanted to replace that or, or build a house or whatever on the seventy-seven acres, would they be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that was, I, I just want to make sure that I, and I, I know I'm repeating, but I want it really clear that we're not keeping her from doing something on the seventy-seven acres. Okay.
It's like, I'm down a little bit from this field. I mean,
Yeah, just not very far from there.
Okay. I guess I didn't pick up my packet or something. Did you have a packet for me, James, that I was supposed to pick up or something? That has.
My.
Or just sent it all. Okay. Okay, but so the planning commission that approved it. And were there any restrictions other than the findings eight or whatever?
Second, no, it was, it was approved with findings outlined in the development seventeen four oh four three.
So I don't have any other questions. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this request from Julie Knight to divide the current parcel into seventy-seven point four four acres and another two point five. It's general rural APN oh oh seven four four one fourteen. And with the understanding that there's one house on the two point five and that she could build or replace or whatever, another residence on the seventy-seven point four four with the findings that the planning commission recommended A through.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you, Julie. Sorry. So your part was easy. We should have done that before we got to the phones.
So now do you have others on here that are in the audience?
Yes. The, the appeal. Mr. Milton on behalf of Desert Mountain Survey. And sorry to keep you waiting, John.
Just for the record, my name is John Milton with Desert Mountain Survey and I represent all finance.
I think I've met you.
I provided you a staff report. This, this matter was heard from the planning commission on June second as well for division in large parcels for all finance LLC. APN zero one two one one zero zero two. And they wanted to divide the parcel into, basically, they're similar in size, a hundred and sixty-four point one three, a hundred and sixty-five point one, one sixty-four point five acre parcels. And then it's a six hundred and forty-eight acres. In the Buena Vista Valley area, a couple miles away from it would be from Kyle Hotspur. It's, that is.
Towards the valley.
It's about two miles from the intersection in the pavement.
Yeah.
It'd be north.
So you want to subdivide this for investment purposes?
Yeah, the finance all LLC acquired this property. What to do with it. It's hard to sell as a section, so they wanted to divide it. I just want to apologize that I was not, I didn't attend the commission, planning commission meeting and it's entirely my fault. I didn't ask for an agenda. I was anticipating it was going to be the following one. That, that's on me. When I do these divisioned large parcels or parceling up, I try to look at the surrounding area to see what's been done in the past. And in this case, I discovered a vision of large parcel done about six years prior, about two miles away. So I went using that as a guideline. I decided to, would meet all the criteria because similar sizes. Was denied for detrimental to health, safety and welfare of the public. There wasn't any, I didn't get anything to describe that. And I just wanted to know what changed between two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one.
One of the things that's changed is water and over, over appropriation of the water basins. So basically dividing this into four parcels, you basically put four more wells out there.
We get one for the sections. It'd be three.
And then i- i- if I may, on the parcel that John is referring to, that was split several years ago. It's, I, I, I have it here. It's, basically it's split by state route four hundred and there's another major county road that runs, runs through it.
That was going to be my next question was.
If, as a, as opposed to, this is the one that he referred, where are those pivots? I believe this is, this is the McCarrick.
Yeah.
But this particular one is one of these referring to as reference that he referred to six years ago, as opposed to that. That, that is the one there. This is the car. Yeah, this one, Bryce, I'm not exactly sure who the pivots belong to then.
I can't think of the names.
This one's got, state route four hundred one, right in the middle of this one and then low key. So in terms of access, I mean, as opposed to the one that they're wanting to divide that has nothing, that has nothing.
To track. Well, I'm confused because it says finding A. That's health, safety and welfare. Didn't mention anything about access. I mean.
No, I, I.
And welfare encompasses access. There's a fire out there.
I'm really out of it too.
So in order to divide this, they would have to that road to the section this way.
Yeah, how do you get access to it?
Well, that would be the first challenge is how would they get, how would they get access?
Yeah.
And then they would have to improve the road.
It wasn't on. Oh, that one. Okay, got it. Okay.
So in this particular case, I, 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 I get where John's coming from with the division of large process that was done several years ago. But I, I don't, I think circumstances of that one versus this one.
Well, I was just looking at item A. His access right away is some feedbacks listed here.
So.
No, that's a different. No, that's a different.
Are you seeing another way to get access to it?
You know, I, this one is, I don't, I don't know how they would get access.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of those.
You can see, see Kyle Hotspur's road. Did you look at that, Carl? How, how they would get access to?
I mean, lots, lots of times when this happens, especially in cases like this where it is out in the middle of nowhere, it creates a headache to the land.
Yeah.
So when they do, when they do sell it, lots of times the realtors tell people that, yes, they can get there. It's, it's this beautiful piece of property.
The next question, the question that comes up, I think it's the next section, which borders Kyle Hotspur. Yeah, who owns that and.
What we would be doing is opening this up for all these other people to request.
Yeah.
And, and we're overdeveloped.
Yeah, and over appropriated and everything goes along with that.
Okay, so the applicant could acquire access and fill the road to it and.
I'm just wondering, you know, if you're going to divide it. How people are going to get there.
The section below is already divided. Parcels and he's required, he's asked or asked to acquire an access because he knows can't sell it without legal access.
The applicant that owns this section or the?
The section, the section to south has already got multiple parcels that was divided years ago. Private section also.
At, at this point though, I think we need to uphold the planning commission's decision not to subdivide because there are other parcels available for people to buy in that area and we can't keep subdividing the hundred and sixty acre parcels and with the water situation there. That's a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
And thank you so much for coming though and waiting for so long.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I keep this one or is this one yours? I just, I need to go home and take a nap.
The, the other person that is waiting is for the, is for the liquor board. So.
Oh, good.
If we want to.
Yes, yes.
I can do that. We can skip to.
We have to recess us.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go in recess for our county commission meeting. And item number thirteen is convening the liquor board.
Yes, you can, if you'd like.
You were hiding behind that post.
All right, I will open the the liquor board and the first item on the agenda list that we have is a request from Silver State Racing for class one liquor license for their special event, which is, which would be August, September, October. Is that correct?
It was one in July.
July, July, August, yeah. And this will be class one and it will be at the racetrack. I provided you with their packet that have the dates and times.
And you have no concerns or do you?
The only thing that I have is
Oh.
Crystal and her husband are the ones that have the safe server. So you have another one?
Yeah. Okay, my computer wasn't printing real well. But I can get you.
So there is another one that we have a third person.
Okay.
With the, with the safe server certification.
And what is a class one? Is it just beer? Is it liquor?
Class one is liquor. It's liquor beer.
So hard drinks mixed?
It's just going to be canned beer.
Canned.
And that's, that's what the track has had in the past.
Is just, was just beer?
Yes, just. I'm not a bartender.
I'll make the motion to approve the liquor license for Silver State Racing class one. July, July, August, September. Do you mind to put the dates?
No, just for.
And October.
The twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
And I'll second.
Does motion a second all favorite?
I.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, it's your.
You said something about some paperwork.
I'll get your, your license mail back to you.
Okay.
Or actually, if you want, if you want to stop by the office later on, I can get it to you.
Yeah, I can bring it back.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for waiting.
Do you have one more?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the second one is the Emily Volunteer Fire Department. They're having their annual street dance July seventeenth. And this one is, is it here on Jerry's not here because he's.
Jerry?
Jerry.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the Emily Volunteer Fire Department for a class one special event license for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, their annual street dance.
The motion a second all favorite? Oh, she cares. And I believe that is it. So I'll adjourn the liquor board.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're still.
Shall we?
Since you're here, let's do the other ones.
Are you resuming, bringing us out of recess?
Yes, we're out of recess. And James is going to finish out his portion before we go back again.
All right, so we'll go to item number one, which is the, or A, I guess, which is a proposal from Far West engineering and research. And they want to assist us in developing maybe some regulations to address water issues in the Grass Valley hydraulic facing zero seven one. I talked to Brett Far and it's even minus six thousand dollars, but I talked to Brent about this specific issue and he's going to have, or if you approve, would have his person, Chris FAC Q U P, the Water Rights Specialist, would research the current data that we have in the water resource plan. Along with, he would set meetings with either the state engineer himself or the deputy engineer reference this basin and whether it, whether moratoriums on domestic wells are warranted and the, and discuss the over appropriation of that particular basin. And whether for your further regulation or even conjunct, conjunctive use regulations might be put in place by the Division of Water Resources. So that, that's something that they will, they will do for us. And then at the end of that, they'll provide a memo to us and possible some guidance. Maybe something we'll put, we might put in our development code or the master plan amendment forward, but hopefully this might be able to give us some tools or maybe some tea, maybe do a moratorium or whatever the board decides to do. For that grass cover at least.
And I spoke with Jeff Ponting and he, I didn't even know this was going on, but he pointed me towards the state water master about that basin and I'm also going to have a conference call with Whitey Chan, Humboldt County manager.
Oh, Dave.
Dave and. As commissioner. Because Humboldt County. Because Humboldt County, um, because of the possible, all the high. Septic systems in Grass Valley area are looking at putting in a sewer system.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's, this is basically all starting because of. What's going on in Grass Valley.
Yeah, well, and that the basin does fall into both camps.
Yes, it's a shared basin and, and they're really concerned about the water condition in the place.
Right.
So did you discuss with me about where the money is?
Where's the money come?
Well, I, I did not discuss the three where the money was coming from, because I didn't know, I didn't know where, if, even if it was possible, where the money might come. Um, but if, if this is something we want, this, I mean, it is definitely something Far West will do, but.
Well, something that we need.
But I, I don't know where the money is.
Now, would this start after July one?
Um, or I, I could probably ask him to not start until July one, but they're, they're prepared to start as soon as they get, I guess.
As long as they don't build.
They just can't build before. Carl, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, would this include looking at the feasibility of a municipal water system for the year? Cause that's the real solution used to be then.
In, in this particular one, no, I do not believe that was part of it.
I don't think Humboldt County is looking at that, because there's no way we can possibly do it, Persian County can. Um, Humboldt, as far as I know currently, is only looking at extending sewer service out there. Um, I'll know more when I talk to them and see what's going on.
I had a discussion with, uh, Commissioner Cherry. Several months back, uh, about the water issues in, in Grass Valley. And he said, yes, and the problem is it's a shared basin and he said the only solution is the municipal water system. I believe that's what I found.
Well, I think for the county, it, it is the water system is out there, it, it, I don't think it's feasible.
The one that's there?
Well, you have Dutchman Acres, but I mean, that's going beyond to provide a main reason. If, if my water system is expensive.
They have a hundred and ninety-six, uh, customers.
Oh, they have one out there.
Yeah, in Dutchman Acres.
Hundred and ninety-six or a hundred and ninety-one somewhere in there, and the customers are not really pleased with.
No, they've not, they haven't been. And not in a long time. There's issues, so. Um, I feel we really need to do this. I'm just concerned. I don't wanna give.
I don't know where you get the money.
Are you waving? Yeah, we're, we're up to here right now.
I'll, I'll just tell them not to start, I'll, I'll ask them not to start until.
Yeah.
So there, you still gotta, we're after July one, the money's gonna come from where?
To come out of, we could, we could do it probably out of the general fund where we had the water resource plan before.
The reason I don't wanna do it for this before June is we have a huge.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely won't be before July one, correct? Before July one.
Yeah, so I doubt if they'll start, we're mid-June, I know they'll start before July first.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the proposal from Far West Engineering to research the development. And the regulations, anyway, as stated on the agenda here, in the amount of six thousand dollars. And absolutely nothing to be started until after July one.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in paper.
Aye.
I, motion passed.
I think next we have the salary resolution for Eric.
Did any of that?
It, it's three months. Um, yeah, it doesn't seem like he has, but this one with his. I think with the current training that he's got and as quickly as he's progressing. And also, when I hired him, that was part of the understanding that in, at his three-month evaluation, if things are going right, that. I would put him in for a salary, a salary resolution.
And it's effective July. Did you?
I will make the motion to approve the salary resolution for Eric Frankham.
And I will second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in paper.
Aye.
Motion passed.
And then my last one is a request, uh, to hire a part-time, less than twenty hours at work one. Um, to assist with the planning commission meeting minutes, um, utility billing or business license. I, I put this on here, um, honestly, I'm not necessarily, I really don't care if you, if you. But I need help with somebody to take minutes.
Well, it used to be, if I remember correctly, and please correct me, but. Um, the planning commission did have someone that was doing the minutes other than, um, the planning director. And, um, if, if there isn't, and I know the DA's office is up to here with stuff too and doing minutes for everyone else. Can't we just hire somebody to do, when was that? Um, Christine, Christine Beck at one point. And, and did Heidi do?
Heidi, it, since, 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 since I've been here, um, planning commission has been. Out of the DA's office and Heidi, Heidi did the minutes, Abby's done the minutes. Um, and.
Chris.
Chris respected the minutes and when, when Chris liked doing the minutes, so when she left, it went to the PD with her and, and now she's gone, so it. It never got back to the DA's office, like, I mean, I, I know these people. But with, with the stuff that could be coming up. It, it's hard for me to do. Um, just to sit and do my own minutes and then back the office and type those on top of the staff reports and, and all, all that other stuff. There isn't another department that I know that has to, one, well, do their own agendas, but actually sit in their own meetings and do their own.
I do it for a lot of committees.
Right. So, irregardless of which way, and I know it's not in the budget to do it, but.
That's why, yeah.
If there's somebody that, that might be able to help, that will be.
Pretty extensive.
Well, we're gonna have a lot of development stuff going on.
Well, maybe the board should address it there. Because. I've talked to my staff, my staff has already worked.
I, I know that, that's why I wasn't saying.
I know, and I know you were being delicate about it and I appreciate it.
No, but I wasn't.
I don't feel like it's the district attorney's office's job to do the minutes for the planning department.
But what about hiring somebody like, um, like the rec board, for instance, has an individual, don't they? I can't. That this is. Oh, but she does other things too, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not in the budget, so you can't really hire anybody. How do you get a volunteer to take minutes?
No, you'd have to pay them something, at least for the hours at the planning meeting and then X number of hours.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying, how do you get a volunteer to do that? Why, why doesn't Eric do the minutes?
Um, it will, and, and like, like racist, I like racist staff, I mean, me and, and Eric. We have plenty to do besides doing that, I mean. None.
Did you say, unlike my staff?
No, I said, well, well, just like your staff. We, we have, your staff has plenty to do, so does mine.
But Holly was doing it before.
Right, but it.
And then she left.
Oh, Holly was doing it before?
Yeah, Holly, Holly, Holly was doing it.
I don't know when the last time the district attorney's office did minutes. They haven't done it.
Oh, it's been years.
It has, yeah, since, since Chris. So, it's just with, with the extra work, the extra duties that's been imposed on my. It's, it would be nice instead of adding to, if I could actually have something.
Here's an idea, we could do it on this agenda is, is. Well, maybe we could, um, link the, uh. Center Director to three-quarter time and, or, or see if the community center person would be willing to. Their stipend to take the minutes for the planning commission.
But you could, you could give a stipend to any employee to do the minutes. Do you know what I'm saying? Over and above, um. I guess the question is if, if Holly was able to do the minutes with everything that's going on.
Why can't Eric?
Why can't Eric? But maybe he doesn't.
The thing is, is Eric's also going to school still. He's still attending school.
So he's not available. Other than they're recorded, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but they're, they're done during work hours.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, it, it's your guys' decision, it just. Sometimes it feels like it won't, if, I, I get more work, but when I ask for help, I don't get it, so.
And, and they are now doing all the built, the business licenses, they're also doing the billing for. Um, the water, Emily Water and Persian Power and. Along with everything else, this, there's two of them in that office and. They're getting a little overwhelmed, especially with all the building permits and.
Okay, I stepped out for a half minute. Did you decide something?
Well, I think at this point, I will take it under advisement and then look at. If there's someone that's already employed that might want to just take, you know, do the minute part. I'll do it for you when I retire, okay? Cause I did minutes for.
I don't type, sorry, James.
Yeah, yeah, you, yes.
I'm not asking for much, I was asking.
No, no, I know. So. I, you know, again, I mean, how do you feel about putting out? Um, a request to current employees to see if somebody would be willing just to take care of the minutes?
Yeah, that's fine.
Could we do that with the way this is worded? On the agenda?
Oh, really?
No.
Okay, right. So, I mean, there might be somebody who just wants to pick up some extra money and be willing to do that.
Well, and it doesn't just say do the minutes, it's also take care of utility bill.
Yeah, but the utility billing has been done and that is a regular thing, the business license processing. The, the biggest time was right now because of, they all go out at one time. And so that's gonna come down to not something so bad.
Yeah, the, the, the rest of it is.
Is manageable, I think.
Like I said, ultimately, the other stuff, I, I, I don't care.
Yeah.
It's what I specifically would like is just somebody to.
To do the minutes. And, yeah, attend the meeting.
Yeah.
Take notes or whatever, however, and record the minutes and do the minutes and get it ready so that you're not doing that. Yeah. So I think we'll put that on the next agenda, okay? Okay. Thank you, but thanks for bringing it up too.
I'm gonna move back to the item I, which is economic development. Heidi, you still on?
Probably gave up.
What?
She probably gave up.
She's, she's still logged in.
She's still logged in?
Yeah, but she might be.
She is probably on another meeting.
Yeah.
So now we're backed up, Rain Child.
Preparing for year end, um, after the vouchers are all inherited, checks run, I'll be doing another check to see which ones need. This is a copy of the email that I received from Juanita Montez, who does the Family Resource Center. And effective July first, um, Persian County Family Resource Center is going to be. Merged with Winnebago F C A A. So Persian County, Juanita and myself will not be doing any of this family resource center anymore. Juanita will do it, but she's gonna go a hundred percent with very shortly. So I believe that Winnebago F C A A is gonna have to hire. Part-time person to do that, Family Resource Center.
And then they'll take care of all the grant support and everything that you've been doing?
And it, I'll have to be truthful, I'm not sorry to say this.
Right.
Because with the COVID problems and the state employees not working and working from home. It's been a disaster this last year. It's taken Juanita and I, usually every month we have to resubmit. Because they either lost stuff or they don't understand what we're submitting, so. For the measly eight percent of indirect costs that we got, which amounted to about a hundred fifty bucks a month.
And you did it just as a courtesy because the school district stopped, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, I think that's great.
So the office moved to seven seventy-five Cornell.
Yeah.
And it's gonna move into.
The old A U's building. The Family Resource Center.
Gotcha, yes.
She'll still be located over at the WIP.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next one, predecessor's office, Lori. A written update. Uh, she can't be in attendance today due to, uh, year-end procedures. However, both her, her and Morgan plan on attending the special meeting on Friday, the eighth, June eighteen. Student Nevada D M B Interlocal Contract was signed this morning, scanned an email. The background check, pet card have been sent twice. Uh, gives the date, the certified mail to D M B, it was brought to her attention late last week. The cards were internally sent to the incorrect entity at the state level. This unfortunate oversight has been ongoing since March of twenty-one. At this time, there is no clarification as to when my team can begin cross-training. She'll keep us informed. Number four is Morgan and I have been working with, uh, pictometry, Eagleview, with the hopes of conducting a summer flight. I'd like to fly somewhere.
I, me too.
When, when our pictometry rep, representative signed our, uh, flight schedule for our annual five-year reappraisal. Uh, is behind it. The flight will potentially catch us up on the next two appraisals. He left. No, no, uh, see, we have one which is from Judge Stevens, a salary resolution. Do you have the salary resolution stuff?
Is, is that effective July one?
I'll make the motion to. I'll make the motion to. To. Sorry, resolution for. Megan Tega.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. District Attorney update. Hi, Jerry Allen. I didn't say, are you? I just said hi. Morning.
No, it's afternoon.
Afternoon.
Oh, it is afternoon.
Probably get angry by now.
Yeah.
It's nice seeing you. Hello.
Well, thank you. It's nice to be seen. Thank you. Good to be here. All right. So for an update, we have twelve inmates in custody today. I had another deputy retire as of yesterday. So.
Who was that?
Pascal.
Oh.
He retired. So now I'm down down two staff members and one still out. We made an offer for the admin position to a an applicant. And they received a better offer from P G H. So we're still looking for somebody to fill that position. And then I think we have a water issue at the jail. I've already advised John to build those grounds. We. Our bill almost doubled in the last.
Water bill.
Yeah, so. I'm not sure. I we can't see anything. There's no stop spots along. There's no. Sinkholes in the concrete or anything like that, but he's he told me today he's got D and D advice about it, so. That's pretty much all I have for an update.
In. At the road shop and in the. I guess in Palm Yard. Get into. Is there any extra trucks that could be?
Extra?
Yeah. That could go to not use that could go to build into ground.
When we purchase our new ones this next budget year probably, but they're. They're going to be the same as what they have now. They're just going to be over mileage worn out.
Yeah.
For.
But it might be a little better than what they have just for a round town because it won't go out of town. Or it goes to the airport.
Yeah.
John put the four new vehicles are four vehicles in his budget for twenty twenty-two to be purchased for state purchases.
I've just, okay.
We have a couple that are still, you know, hundred and fifty to hundred and seventy that might might fit for that. Yeah.
Well, there's one that's parked on Cornell all the time or was.
This is a deputy lived right there. And he just and he just quit two weeks.
He just quit, so it's not parking anymore.
Yeah, I noticed that it wasn't, but okay.
But when I fill that position, I'm going to need that vehicle.
Yeah.
If I feel that if I'm able to fill that position.
Doesn't look good these days.
Yeah.
I have two more that can retire at any time. So.
Yeah.
Yep, we just have no depth to pull from.
Thank you.
There's something on the agenda though.
What?
I think it's going to be a moot point at this point because this is the first opportunity I've had to bring this before the board. I tried to get it on last agenda and I left a family emergency to come back down, but apparently I was not. Soon enough getting it on the agenda to be on the agenda. So. I didn't get access to the video recording of the April fifth budget hearing until May nineteenth. So. In an effort to to keep this short, because we've all been here too long today already. I I have to have to express my disappointment with the board in the way the budget hearings went. I took. Three, three budget hearings came down here, presented my budget for this board. And when I left on April fifth. I was advised that my budget would hold with what we've worked out. And. Intentional or not, I believe I can't fault the. The other official that came in from answering very pointed questions by this board. But this board asked another elected official very pointed questions about my budget. And made a decision on my budget. Based on that officials answers. And. I I didn't even find out about it from the board. I found out about it from someone else. And when I approached my liaison. He confirmed that yes, my budget didn't change. Now I have a budget that apparently is approved through this board and through the state. That I'm not even sure what it contains anymore. Because it's not my budget. It's not what I propose. It's not what I, as the elected official of the sheriff's office and the elected board of commissioners. Talked about and agreed on when I left my budget here. And I understand there's checks and balances. But I'm a little disappointed. There's a lot of checks and there's no balance. I was not allowed or afforded the opportunity to come in and defend my position. My proposal or any of the information that I had already given this board. To make my proposal valid. And so now I'm sitting here trying to figure out, do I get to run my budget? Does the board get to run my budget? Do other elected officials get to run my budget? How how is this work now? Because now I have to work with the budget, but I'm not even sure what it has in it. So like I said, it's probably a moot point at this point because it's already been axed. That position's already been axed by this board. And it's already gone through the processes, but I think it's important for this this board to know that. I don't know that that from my perspective. I don't know that sabotage is the right word, but I don't think with me not being afforded the opportunity to come and defend my position. That I can adequately serve this community. If I can't even have is some kind of control over the budget in a way. Services and supplies and equipment and personnel that I can bring to the table. To provide law enforcement services for this county.
When when that was happening, I tried to call you and you were in the.
I was upstairs in the district court.
So you couldn't come here to defend it.
No. But we could have had another meeting.
Yeah.
We could have had. We could have done a lot of things. A lot of things could have been done.
But you weren't informed then?
No, I still to this day have never been informed by the board. I've been informed by other people and verified by the board when I've confronted members of the board. But. Like I said, it's a moot point at this point because I think the budget's already set and we're just going to have to deal with what we deal with. I mean, I understand in the twenty years, twenty plus years I've been an employee this county. Not once has this board come to anybody and said, hey, you know, we have a plethora of money this year. Let's go for the go for the.
Yeah, what if that would happen?
Every year it's a tight budget year. I understand that. And I understand that we're more than six years into a jail program. A new jail process that we're still basically on the ground for for. So I realize we don't have a lot of money. However, with the legislature continuing to burden.
Yes.
Law enforcement with our responsibilities and the more things that we have to do. With the state's money drying up. And their investigators not being able to respond, highway patrol not being able to respond with the city drying up. And we have to take over more of that burden. More burden falls onto my office and we are. We are very, just like anybody, everybody else has said, we're very overworked right now. Like I said, I got two more people that can retire. And I have one that said he's close to burnout and he's a very young guy. He's probably at his. Third of the way through his career, which is normally where people either burn out or they they trudge on and keep going. So we just don't have the depth to pull from it. And it takes, as I've advised the sport, it takes anywhere from six months, eighteen months to get somebody. Certified and qualified to get out on there and doing the job.
And it's a thankless job too, I know.
Yeah, I know. Do it for that. And I obviously didn't do it for the money either, so.
I apologize.
I like to serve my community.
Yeah, I apologize that you weren't informed or. Given an opportunity to.
I appreciate that. And hopefully we'll do better for next year. We always get better each year, so.
Well, your points well taken.
Well, hopefully.
So. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
What one? One question.
Certainly.
Dare. For frontier days.
Right.
What the hours of you? I got called and asked this yesterday. The hours of you.
Usually we serve between, well, it all depends on when the lion's cub wants to start serving lunch. Usually we go seven to ten and then between ten and eleven, we're cleaning up and lion's cub is getting prepped for lunch.
Okay.
So if that works.
That was that was the question. It was from the.
And I still got to get you that letter too.
The committee.
I've been busy the last two weeks, so.
Yeah, okay. With that being with that being said, number eight. There's no information to provide. I do have an informer, a call that I haven't returned yet, which is from the architect. I will make that phone call and tell him we have no plans to build it at jail at this time. Number ten proclamation and awards.
I don't have any.
Grass Valley, we did Derby Field Airport. John reported on a little bit that was going on out there. We do have an individual. That is willing to polish the the mid fifteen that's sitting there. In fact, I have some pictures he sent me this morning, so he is working on.
Great.
I'm doing some. Some polish work. He's a local guy, lives in Wright Pats and spends a lot of time at Deer Park. There is an issue with the gate again, opening and closing. Yesterday I ordered another part for that. Board appointments. Yes.
What kind of money are you talking about for the state park? Because the airport.
Warranty, no, no charge. Board appointment. We have several in here.
I have a question. Didn't we appoint Lowell Henderson last meeting? Because I thought that I had I had said to the recycling board. Because I thought.
He had withdrawn.
Withdrew it, but I said he was putting back in, but I don't recall for sure, but I can reappoint him. Oh, okay. If if you're ready for appointments.
Yes.
I can do this.
The first one on there is.
Lowell Henderson. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Lowell Henderson to the recycling committee. Randy Solaki and Daryl Mancivo to the wildlife board. And accept the resignation from Latisha Barrington from the Grass Valley Advisory Board. Appoint Ted Bender to the Board of Equalization.
Ted what?
Ted Bender.
Bendoor.
Bendoor, whatever Ted. And then appoint Penny Higbee to the volunteer board. And then. Well, before we appoint Diana and Harrison, do we have to advertise that Grass Valley Board vacancy or is it?
It's not a vacancy. She's just not. She's not.
Okay, all right. So and then appoint Diana Harrison to Grass Valley Advisory Board. I think I got them all.
I'll second.
I think you got them all.
Okay, good.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. You've all been duly reappointed. Was one of those Penny Higbee?
Yes, yes, volunteer board.
Care funding. Do we have anything new to report?
I don't, other than we have an email from. Sean Burke about his brush truck and wanting a replacement and. You know. I don't even know what kind of money we're talking about and. Is there one out there that we can?
There isn't.
Yeah, but I mean.
You know, that's the one that last year we had a a donation from. Feeling.
Yeah.
For Wright Pat.
And it took forever and ever and ever to.
Oh, it took forever.
What are we looking at anyways for a brush truck?
I don't know, but I bet we're in the two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It could come out of one of those where you have. You know, the rescue truck.
Well, except we didn't. We didn't.
I know. We haven't approved any of that. What I'm saying is maybe some money.
Well, maybe not these and get a new brush truck for Grass Valley.
What's that?
Here's the new one that we we looked at last time. We didn't. We didn't really approve any of those. They were just on the backup part.
Yeah, let me find out more about cost and then whatnot. Litigation. No litigation. Report from legal counsel.
Yeah, I met on Tuesday with a committee that is it's kind of an ad hoc committee that's been formed by. All of the counties and several large cities in Nevada regarding opioid fund litigation proceeds. And how those are going to be divided for the state of Nevada among the counties and also the cities. We really didn't accomplish it a lot, so we're going to have another meeting this coming Monday at three o'clock. And I would strongly encourage one member of the board to join me. For that meeting. It's all online. I was the only representative out of probably thirty that didn't have a county commissioner or someone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who does the legislature, the legislator, who plays a legislative role. On city government or county government. It's not that I'm complaining about it. I'm not complaining, Carol. I'm just saying, I was flying solo and I thought all of these other counties have. A county commissioner present. We probably ought to have one too. I think maybe. Landor didn't have one.
A volunteer.
But everyone else had a city manager. Or a district attorney with the city manager or. A commissioner and the district attorney. So I think that we need that. So if you could come over to my office.
Monday? At three?
Yep.
Thank you for volunteering.
I'll be there.
Good.
Report from administrative assistant. Nothing to report. Items for future agendas.
Yeah, I have one. So this issue with minutes and who's going to take the minutes. The planning commission. I'll talk to my staff. I'm going to choose my words as carefully as I possibly can. Because the sheriff just came in and he was upset about how this board did the budget. He was upset that when the comments were made. The planning director is upset that work is being forced upon him and. He's not being paid enough or whatever. I I I sympathize with that. But I'll remind this board that the district attorney's office is in the same boat as all of these other offices. I certainly don't want the county to have to pay a stipend. For someone to do something that's probably part of. Their job anyway. If they're at work and they're not doing anything else, they should be working. They should be doing something. But I I don't want this board to make the assumption that somehow taking minutes at the. A big at the planning commission. No, I'm not saying burden. I'm saying that it's somehow the obligation. My office to do that. Because I feel like during that conversation, the sheriff alluded to. This board also denied my office a public guardian. So. He's not the only one who is.
We don't have the funds to grant them.
Right. So I'll talk to my staff. I'll see how they feel about it, but I'm not going to obligate them without talking to them.
You've already got a staff member that does so many minutes for so many different.
I know I wrote it down. She does it for museum, web, she saw the ways TV.
Yeah.
Nine one one broadband. And now this new subcommittee.
So those are all advisory boards. They're not under my task and statute to do minutes for. Why can't a board member be the minutes for those boards? I mean.
Oh, I remember.
Normally you wouldn't have a member of the board be the secretary.
I know. It's hard to ask somebody that's a volunteer to take more time. That's what we do with the.
I was going to say.
So I'll talk.
Well, it's not like their commission minutes. They just shouldn't take that much time.
The planning commission.
No, I mean, I wasn't. I was some of the other advisory boards. Like that's why I was saying. Why a board member couldn't do it. why a board member couldn't do it because it's not like they have to be as detailed as the planning commissioner or the commissioner.
So on my desk this morning, my desk, my area this morning, I found all these. And have you seen?
Yeah, Rain sent them to me. I haven't had time to
Five more today, Tuesday.
Five more today. What they are is they're letters wanting us to have a forensic audit of the twenty twenty election in our state. And these are signed by well
Are they signed by a community member?
I don't see one.
They want to record it that they're not informed out in their fees for us.
I don't see one address.
In Virgin County?
What's that?
Is it from Pershing County?
No.
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 There's none from Northern Nevada.
Oh.
Yeah.
And I do know because we've had lots of calls of the Secretary of State's office, the the Secretary of State has received those same requests. And there is nothing in statute to provide for that. So she was like that.
Yeah. So I brought it under up under this item because I don't think it's something we need to add to the agenda to discuss. Unless I hear a difference.
One of those pages, Larry, I don't know if it's in your stuff, but it was in ours. It's Gettler County, Landry County. Washington County, Pershing County.
Or bless them. It does list in different counties. Yes, it does.
But I got advice from Bryce.
Yeah.
Okay, matters of the board for discussion. Anything, Sheila?
Other than the, you know, contacting Jeff Fontaine and and him sending me in a direction which leads to Humboldt County and that. Community center. Heidi's been great. I can't thank her enough. John and Myron have both been great. We had an issue over graduation weekend. I guess a certain community member jumped all over Myron about the dumpster being full and she was not very nice to our our custodian staff and it was a little out of line. I didn't know. I need Bryce's help on what to do with this. You know.
I don't know what that is.
It's the the Fallon
Intergovernmental Executive Committee for the Fallon Expansion.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I need is who's gonna be the alternate on this?
I thought we voted that I won.
I thought we did, and I thought we already submitted that, but we have to do it again in paper this time?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I thought we already did that.
Well, we voted on it.
The boards already voted on it. And Carol was nominated and assigned, so.
So just fill this out and send it to them?
Yep.
Okay, I have a couple of things. This morning I had a call from Jim Barbie at Churchill. And they're looking at having some meetings regarding a health district. There's some grant fundings that Julia Peak has obtained. And right now they're just gonna be conversations. And there's no obligation to it, but eventually it might work into something where Churchill Mineral Eureka, I think it was, and us might be able to form a health district so that we won't be dictated to by the state if there should be another pandemic or whatever. It does not replace the community health nurse services or anything like that. So unless there's some objection, I'm willing to sit in on those and listen to them and and then bring back information. And it's they may be able to have funds too to be able to hire some people to help with different areas. So I have tickets for the August fourteenth Pershing Healthcare Foundation dinner. It's a best dinner. They're forty five dollars each. If you're gonna buy a ticket, please buy them for me. Because I have ten I have to sell. And gosh, I got an email from someone who's other than the email address because they didn't sign it. They want to know if we're going to join Elko and Lander County becoming a constitutional sanctuary.
So we have a letter. In fact, I have it here, which is from Elko County Board of Commissioners requesting us to to join them. It's a constant constitution resolution, resolution to join the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. And we can put this on the agenda for some time if we want to.
Well, and I'd be interested in what the sheriff thinks as well.
Yeah. Have you seen? Yeah. I'll see what the sheriff says. Okay, that's it.
That's it.
I have nothing to report. Brings us down to public input. Public comment and discussion, the action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda. As an item upon which action will be taken, public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any further comment?
Are we still on there like safety flag?
I think so.
I didn't know that was you behind that man.
Yeah. Any, is there a, um? Next item up is approval of vouchers.
Bryce, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no, you don't need to say sorry at all. It's just introductory and
Well, yeah, but
Pershing County shares less than one percent.
There's another one.
Yeah, I just put it in here. Second, all in favor?
Aye, and he's abstaining. I will make a motion that we approve the vouchers for BSL.
And I'll have to second that motion.
Thanks.
Don't do that again. Have pros.
Okay, hearing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.